We will call to order the special meeting of the, or special workshop of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. If the clerk would call the rule, please.
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Chalim Cherla and Kozlowski are both absent.
Okay, if you guys will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we can start with our first item.
You have no agenda updates this evening or this afternoon, so that takes us into workshop item number one. This is a council workshop on developing a strategy to close the city's future funding gap, introduction to strategic planning and direction to staff.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. As you will remember, on February 8th, you convened in a special meeting format to discuss strategies for closing the city's future potential budget shortfall. I appreciate your time today to continue that very important discussion. And just a reminder, these are all very important steps and underpinnings for developing the city's strategic plan. As we shared with you last month, we are not bringing this to you because there is an immediate budget problem. We can hold our own in our current constrained state in the current fiscal year, and we can do the same again, still in that very constrained state into the next fiscal year. But looking out farther, we know the trajectories are showing that this is not sustainable, not only in terms of meeting current needs, but also in terms of making sure that we are meeting and ideally exceeding that very warranted community expectation pace we're facing. We spent quite a bit of time with you, providing detail as to our fiscal picture and future funding gap last time around, and we also discussed a suite of possible solutions that could be deployed, including using one-time ARPA funding as a, you know, crutch was the word I used, potential revenue enhancements, including a sales tax increase, potential cuts and economic development strategies. At that meeting, we sought direction from you to move forward with a community engagement process, and you gave us the green light on that. And we are looking forward to bringing you results that hopefully will help inform your decisions about closing the city's future shortfall and also your strategic planning process that we will discuss later this afternoon. At that February 8th meeting, you also asked that we return to you with an item for your consideration to establish council subcommittees focused on economic development. And we did just that at the next meeting on February 22nd. And I want to extend my thanks for your direction and to Councilmember Aquino and Vice Mayor Rodriguez and members of our community for serving on that ad hoc committee, which is examining opportunities as to the underutilized or unutilized city properties and opportunities that could be created there. I believe they're hosting their first meeting this week, so that's very exciting. So today, just so you know the flow of the conversation, you're first going to hear from Stacy Tumani, who is our Chief Financial Officer and Director of Finance, who's going to provide a brief overview, a recap of the financial information that she presented on February, on February 8th, just in case anyone is just now joining the conversation and wants to be caught up. And from there, you all made great comments and asked great questions last time around, many of which we addressed, but some of which we wanted to come back to you with more information. And so we'll move from there into a series of report backs about issues that you brought up last time. And then we'll conclude with a couple of exercises that are designed to further inform your strategic planning process and assist us in our ongoing community engagement efforts. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy for that brief recap. Stacy will address at the conclusion of her kind of summary, she's going to talk about report backs related to cost control measures we've already taken, sales tax revenue, property tax revenues, it relates to South of 50 development, differentiating South of 50 costs from others, and the extreme and growing level of unmet needs in our major operational departments. So I'll turn it over to you, Stacy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. And as we went over in last month's presentation, the city has a projected future funding gap. That means that our revenues are growing at a slower pace than expenses, and that creates a gap in the future. It means we won't be able to balance future budgets unless we take proactive action now. Although we're meeting all of our current obligations, there are millions of dollars of unfunded or underfunded needs that the city has been deferring year after year. And these are deferred needs, not wishless items. And unfortunately, these needs don't go away when they're deferred. They continue to accumulate, and the cost to pay for them has continued to grow. And on a related note, we're currently working on the fiscal year '22-'23 budget. And in preliminary meetings with the department heads, we've received about $25 million in additional requests for next year's budget, including 53 requested new positions. And many of these items have been on these lists, on their top priority lists for the past three years and many for longer. And what's been happening is that when they come to the budget team every year, they're on the list. And with the revenue that we have available to allocate across all departments, it doesn't cover even 20% of these, these top requests on the list. And so these are items that are getting pushed to the next year every year. These are things like replacing vehicles that are now getting to be close to 20 years old, replacing failing equipment, repairing fuel tanks, et cetera. It's things to continue to allow the departments to do what they've been doing. We also end up with mandated costs that have to be added to the budget every year. One example of this just came to us from the county of Sacramento. They're replacing their property tax system, and the cost gets passed down to us in proportion. And so that's an extra $400,000 being added to our budget and not by choice. So those were just some extra notes that I wanted to add before reviewing some of the slides that we had last meeting. When we look at the general fund revenue in a pie chart format, we see here, and we saw this last time, that property tax and sales tax is about 61% of our total revenue. Our other sources are much smaller. We have the transient occupancy tax. It's only 2% of our total revenue. And even if we combine all of our licenses, permits, VLF, charges for services altogether, it's 25% of our total revenue. And so obviously, it's the property tax and sales tax that's funding most of the general fund services and programs, and that's where we see the most impact from fluctuations and changes in revenue trends. And that's why we spent so much time in our last meeting reviewing those two categories. In the last presentation, we reviewed property tax and noted that it's about $33 million annually right now. You saw this slide, and what this one shows is our projected trend line for property tax. It curves up a bit, starting in fiscal year 18, 19, and that's due to new development. And I just put this slide back up here to show that trend and also note that that curve up after fiscal year 18 and 19, not a surprise or a windfall. Property tax is just performing exactly as planned and as expected. I have a few sales tax slides to review, but I wanted to note that we have our sales tax expert on the line for you this afternoon. Tom Adams is our consultant from Avenue Insights. And after I go through just a few sales tax slides, he's here to help answer any questions that I haven't been able to cover in my presentation. So here we have our chart for fiscal year 11, 12 through fiscal year '22, '24's, I should say, '23, '24's projection. And we're experiencing, we were experiencing a steeper upward trend of growth, which we talked about in our last meeting. And then what happened in about fiscal year 18, 19 is it started to flatten out. And when we look at fiscal year 16, 17, went down a bit for 17, 18, and then it was, it was flat for 18, 19. And even as we move forward to 2021, it's still pretty much where we were at in fiscal year 16, 17. And so we did have the impacts of COVID, but it has since recovered. And now we're looking at a projection going forward much lower than where we were at before. It's about a 2.5% growth every year. And it's a, it's a couple of things that are causing this change in our trend line. It's a combination of a shift in consumer buying behavior, it's a few economic factors, and also there have been changes to the way that revenue is allocated to the city from the county pool. And so it's cause for concern for future years. This is a slowing growth of one of our very major sources of revenue, and it's going to have a big impact on our funding gap in upcoming years. And so why is this happening? We gave a few reasons in our last meeting, that there's a shift from purchasing things to purchasing services for many people. There's a shift in how we buy it with more e-commerce. The way that we receive the tax revenue through those types of purchases is generally lower than how we receive it if it's received through brick and mortar purchase. And there's also a shift in how much that generally people can afford to buy. As there's an increase in the cost of services and an increase in the cost of housing, it erodes the buying power or just the dollars that are left over to purchase taxable goods. And this trend is not going away. And this last slide here is our, showing the visual of property tax and sales tax together. And up until about fiscal year 17, these two of our major revenue sources in the general fund were trending at about the same rate. And that allowed our expenditures to grow at about a 4.5% or 5% growth rate and be below our revenues. Now, this is flattening out for sales tax, and so we're seeing this gap between the trend that expenses were on, because they were trending pretty much with property tax, and with sales tax flattening, you have this gap in between the two, and it's growing. And as this gap grows and the piece of our cost, the pace of our revenues does not keep pace with the cost to provide services, then those services will be impacted. And so I will pause here. It's the end of my revenue portion. If anybody has any questions for our consultant, Tom Adams.
Stacy, if you don't mind, can you move to one slide back?
Sure.
Just on first bullet, what we buy, there is a shift from purchasing things to purchasing services. Is that a new thing, or is that the trend? Can you give a little bit more on that, please?
Yeah, and I'll see if Tom could help answer that. So Tom, the question was, why or where are we seeing the shift from purchasing things to purchasing services?
Tom, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, so this has been a gradual trend. It's not just services, it's other things like digital goods. Digital goods are not taxed in the state of California. Other things such as experiences that are talked about sort of kind of generationally, the younger demographics, say millennials and younger, have less of a, of an emphasis on their sort of buying habits on goods versus experiences and digital goods and those sorts of things. So this is not something sudden. This has been sort of occurring over the last, I don't know, maybe 10, 10, 20 years. The services side sort of came in before the digital side. We have seen a little bit of a change during the pandemic as people didn't have as much access to, or they weren't as comfortable, should I say, consuming services because they, they were often sort of in person and might have, might have some sort of health danger if you're, you know, consuming things kind of person-to-person versus either ordering them online or, you know, kind of having distance in a store or something like that.
Got it. Tom, this is YK, just to, you know, recognize myself. That is not just the Folsom thing, it is across the county to state. Is my assumption right?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As well as throughout the rest of the nation as well.
Yeah.
So it's just a, you know, a change in the overall economy from a goods-based economy, say, in kind of part of the 20th century to a kind of services-based economy, kind of towards the later part of the 20th century, to kind of more of a digital-based economy that we're seeing sort of unfold as, as we, as we kind of go into the 21st century, or as we're going through the 21st century, I should say.
Got it. So first bullet, everyone is experiencing across the board. So that's good.
That's correct.
Yeah, I know, it's not good, but that's what it is. But among those three, what is impacting the most, the decline of so widening gap for Folsom? I heard you're the data person and expert. That's why I'm asking this question.
And Tom, I, I was just going to clarify, because I'm not sure if you can see the slides. So we had the shift from purchasing things to purchasing experiences, services, how we buy it, which is more of the e-commerce, and then how much we can afford to buy, which is just the erosion of buying power. And he's asking which one is impacting it the most.
The most, because the gap is widening as we see it, you know, year over year. And what we buy, the first bullet, the thing, is across the board. So everyone is experiencing that. Everyone probably may be, you know, probably, that is at this point, moot point for me. Number two, how we buy it, internet sales.
Yeah. So, so certain things are being more impacted by these trends and other things less impacted. So it has a bit to do with kind of what your, what your, your mix is of your different, your different sales tax producing categories. So for Folsom, for instance, the, the mix leans a bit more on retail and transportation and a bit less on food versus, say, a typical city. Restaurants were some of the most impacted during the, during the pandemic, the most impacted sector. But overall, that's a sector that is somewhat impervious to, to changes in where people are actually purchasing their goods. You had mentioned about purchasing over the internet, and we have seen significant increases. I saw one study that thought that those trends had been going on, and the thought was that it accelerated those trends by about five years. So we had seen gradual sort of shifts from brick and mortar to, to online purchasing, you know, again, for maybe the last 10, 15, 20 years. And it just accelerated during the pandemic. Now, some of those, when you buy something online, sometimes it's going to go to wherever that business, if they're California-based, it could go to wherever they have their corporate headquarters. That's considered the point of sale. Or it might go through where they have their, their warehouse, if it's an out-of-state business. In certain cases, it would go through the county pool. One of the large ones that goes through the county pool is, is Amazon. Amazon carries about, I think it's about half of purchases on, on, from online sales go through Amazon. And they have an expanding part of their, their retail online offerings is third-party sellers that sell through the Amazon platform. Now, not to get too technical on this, but there have been some changes in how places like Amazon are reporting as they change their operations. And there may be more money going to those warehouse fulfillment centers. There's one, for instance, located in the unincorporated area of Sacramento County, kind of by the airport. What happens in that case is you may have been getting some money in the past through the county pool from Amazon that is not coming in to the same levels that it was, say, a year or two ago. So there's, there's different sort of fundamental changes going on, both in terms of purchasing as well as, as to where the, the sales tax is, is being allocated from online purchases.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. I know it's giving me enough information, because I know the trend is going to go away. And we, as a council, how can we, you know, provide some guidance to staff to address the problem in partnership with our, you know, Chamber of Commerce and local businesses and all those, right? Thank you.
Tom, I have a question. This is Rosario Rodriguez. So as sales tax is no longer a steady income, what are we seeing, whether it's statewide or nationwide, that is generating revenue from taxes for cities? What industry are those?
Rosario, he is specifically our sales tax consultant, so I'm not sure that he might be able to give you that correct information.
Sales tax from industries?
Oh, you're wanting to know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So specific to sales tax.
Okay.
Okay. So I think, as I mentioned in that last comment, a growing area are these either, you know, if you either have a warehouse distribution facility center within your, your jurisdiction that, you know, such as Amazon has, or many of the other larger retailers have these, there have, there have been sales tax sharing agreements that some, some cities have entered into. Those are sometimes controversial. But the online side of the sales tax seems to be a growing, the one kind of growing area. It's also sort of business-to-business activity, depending on what, what types of, of business-to-business transactions. Those can be another area that, that is sort of related to some of that, some of the online activity. Those are, are a couple that we, we have seen growing recently.
So this is Sarah Aquino. Tom, let me maybe rephrase Rosario's question in a little bit different way. Aside from passing our own sales tax measure or landing a distribution center, have you seen other jurisdictions come up with any creative solution to try to increase their sales tax revenue?
I think you've probably discussed most of them with, with your staff. You know, rezoning certain parcels for, for different uses is, is one, one area that, that some jurisdictions look towards. Again, it has to, that is going to depend upon what, you know, your current kind of build-out is and, and community sentiment and those sorts of things. You know, some, some areas like to sort of focus on, on their, their strengths and, you know, have focused on their, their downtown areas as, as sort of entertainment areas and, you know, for restaurants and those sorts of things. So that's another area that we've seen some, some jurisdictions have success. You know, and also just capitalizing on, you know, strong existing areas of, of sort of economic concentration. So if, if you have kind of a strong car sales area, you know, sort of, you know, adding to that can, can also be, you know, a sales tax winner as well.
Tom, by rezoning, are you talking about rezoning property to allow something like an Amazon warehouse?
Not necessarily an Amazon warehouse, but yeah, something along those lines of, an economic-producing, generating zoning versus something that may not be necessarily economic or sales tax-producing, that, that sort of thing.
I have one more question. Tom, it's Rosario. I have one more question. So when I look at the Folsom Plan area that has an exit off the freeway that has area for growth, is it still fair to say there are businesses that draw people to get off the freeway that will shop at these, whether it be In-N-Out, Starbucks, you know, other type of businesses like that? Is that, is that still, is it fair to say that it's still a, a sales tax generating business?
Yes, 100%, that, 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 as my old manager used to say, you still can't, you know, get a good hamburger, can't order a good hamburger online. So, you know, people will continue to go out to restaurants. You know, we're, we're starting to see that come back. It is interesting, however, you mentioned Starbucks. So, so not all outlets generate the same amount of sales tax. So hot coffee to go is, is, is not taxable. It is taxable in the state of Washington where Starbucks is headquartered. So we have lots of exemptions in our sales tax code, and it, and it turns out that Starbucks doesn't actually generate much sales tax versus, you know, a similar, similar footprint that, that might have, say, a, you know, a fast food restaurant or something like that.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Okay. So now we'll take a look again at our general fund expenses. We wanted to review what we've done so far over the last 10 years to reduce our general fund expenses. We've significantly reduced staffing levels. They've remained flat for the past four years. We've used part-time or contract employees when feasible. We've increased employee contributions towards retirement. They now pay their entire share. We've eliminated retiree health benefits for new employees. We've increased employee contributions to health benefits. We've also restructured education incentive pay to provide cost savings. We've extended the number of steps and pay ranges to have smaller annual pay increases. We've eliminated longevity pay for new employees, and we've capped accrued leave balances and cash out amounts. And so the result, which we talked about last time, is that after doing all of this, there's really a limited ability to reduce service costs further. Without increased revenues, then a reduction in city services will be required to balance the budget. And this is a review again of our general fund full-time positions. At our high point in fiscal year '07, '08, we had about 461 full-time general fund employees. In the last approved budget, we had about 352. It was 6.81 general fund employees per 1,000 residents, and we're now at 4.39. So the population has grown, but our staffing levels have not. And we had a request from the council to review our Big Six operating departments and, and the slides of the unfunded needs again, so I'm going to go over those. And I've incorporated the second request, which was to explain which items on the list are related to development in the Folsom Plan area, south of Highway 50. So I've highlighted those in blue on the slides. So again, we had our unfunded and underfunded needs. We had asked the departments to create a very comprehensive analysis of these needs, things that were going to be one-time costs in the next five years and, and items that were going to be annual costs over the next five years. At one time, it totals about $39 million for our six major departments. And then we had annual needs in the next five years that would add $20 million to the budget if we were to include them. And then going forward, beyond five years, about $233 million. And included in the annual costs is 102 positions. So we'll go over police again. The needs here are items such as deployment vehicle, small armored vehicle, and a new mobile command vehicle, marked and unmarked vehicles. And we provide for some of those in the budget, but not at the replacement schedule that, that would really be desirable. Facility renovations and technology updates for aging facilities and, and needs for technology. And then the staffing needs. And there were, in this category, there were staffing needs in, in all of them that are related to the plan area. So 33 of the 50 are related to the plan area in the next five years. There are police officers in total of 28, dispatchers, six, community service officers, two, and two animal control officers, and then other professional staff of 12. For the fire department, there are fire station and facility upgrades. There are aging facilities as well. We have engines, trucks, medic vehicles, and staff vehicles. And again, we, we do our best to fund these in the current budget, but we're just getting behind on the replacement schedule for these large-dollar items. We have small equipment, things such as wildland apparatus and mechanical CPR devices. And then for staffing, firefighters of 18 in total, nine of them would be to staff the new fire station in the plan area. We have mechanics, two, a fire marshal, a deputy fire chief, a division chief, and two administrative For parks and recreation, there are unfinished but planned parks, trails, and facilities with, with no dedicated funding source. City facility renovations, such as ADA for parks and facilities, building maintenance, turf, both indoor and outdoor for the Andy Moore and Sports Complex, irrigation controller upgrades for 17 park locations. There's also park renovations per the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and we've been trying to chip away at that, but it continues to grow at a probably faster rate than we're able to provide any funding towards. Ladder fuel maintenance and hazard tree care, and then aquatic center upgrades and equipment replacement as that facility continues to age. The staffing needs for parks and recreation, we have the municipal landscape services staff. That includes an engineering technician. And then the blue highlighted staff would be related to the plan area, two senior maintenance workers, two maintenance workers, and a maintenance supervisor. There's park maintenance staff, a park planner, three maintenance workers, an irrigation system coordinator, and then recreation staff, a staff coordinator, and an administrative assistant. For community development, there are consulting services for studies, plans, and updates that, that just aren't funded in the regular annual budget. There's development services analyst, GIS specialist, building plans coordinator. Again, I've highlighted the blue ones for the plan area, building inspector, building plan checker, construction inspector, planning technician, and a code enforcement officer. For public works, there's a need for an additional street sweeper for the city that would partially be used in the Folsom Plan area. There are fueling system upgrades, tank replacements, and new fuel pumps, all just aging infrastructure. all just aging infrastructure, various studies to be completed for the corporation yard, a traffic demand management study, noise reduction program, in lieu fee studies, public electric vehicle charging stations. And then staffing here in public works, they would only be partially related to the Folsom Plan area. In total, there's the need for an associate engineer for traffic, an associate engineer for CIP projects, two street maintenance workers, a street sweeper maintenance specialist and two sign shop maintenance workers. And the library has a need for carpet replacement, again, another aging facility. It's about 14,000 square feet of carpet. Going back to this slide just one more time, what this means here is that not only do we have that shortfall that's coming in upcoming years just to provide our current level of service, we have at least $20 million of important annual needs, $38 million in one-time costs that the city will have to just continue putting off indefinitely with the revenue levels that we have right now. And as we look forward to the next five years, we saw this slide in the last presentation. The blue columns are projected revenue trend for all revenue types in the general fund. This combines everything. It combines the flattening of sales tax and the increase in property tax altogether. And then the yellow line is the projected cost of providing our current level of service. And as I mentioned on the slide, it doesn't include adding any of the unfunded needs that we just went over. It means just staying in that constrained spot that we already are. And then as we move forward over the next four years, likely needing to reduce service levels because of the level of resources that we will have at that point. And that concludes my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy before we move on to some human resources issues?
I do have one question. I think Rosario's question for Tom about, you know, things off the freeway and stuff and his answer that Starbucks doesn't generate as much sales tax as you would think because hot coffee isn't taxed. I know there's a limit as to what you're able to release, the information you're able to release about specific sales tax data for specific businesses. But as, for example, as the shops at Folsom Ranch start to come online and they're recruiting businesses to fill those spots, is that something that we could give them some data to say, look, if you have the choice of getting an In-N-Out or Chick-fil-A versus a Starbucks, we want this because this generates more sales tax revenue?
Yeah, and we could do it by category. So we could possibly break it down so there'd be enough information that you could make that kind of decision.
I think that would be, I mean, I think they're filling those spots right now. So it would be good to have that information.
Just a point of clarification, the issue basically with the coffee, it's not that it's hot coffee, it's that it's to-go.
Oh, I don't know. I'm just quoting what he said was hot coffee, so.
But restaurants' food is to-go.
I know, but for whatever reason, there's certain things in California that if they're packaged to-go, then there's no sales tax on it.
Interesting.
But the principle is still the same. Let's put something there that generates more sales tax revenue.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on Stacy's remarks?
I do one more. If you don't mind, can I go back one slide? I know you're making a statement, for example, fiscal year 2027, that deficit is going to be 2.3 millions, but whereas the Folsom South building constructions in next five years, I know you mentioned it, I just want that clarification because in your previous slides, you are quoting with the blue color for a Folsom Plan area. Can you explain one more time? In next five years, we will have definitely, you know, a large volume of houses, residents are being moved in. How is that 2.4 million gap?
And so you're asking why is there still a gap?
Yeah.
Because there's the expectation that the council would approve in each budget year an increase in service levels. So that would mean nine new firefighters, additional police officers, a driver for the street sweeper, all of those things. So that's going to increase expenditures that will likely match or maybe even exceed the amount of property tax revenue that would be coming in from that development. So it's all kind of factored in.
Thank you. So on your previous slides, whatever you have quoted in blue probably are going to be fulfilled based on the revenue trend increases.
If we can.
Right? I mean, again, council has to approve it. That's all it is there. But because those you have quoted specifically for plan area and plan area, new revenue is coming as and when a new homeowner is being moved. I just want that clarification.
Yeah, and dependent on the economy and continued building.
There's so many unknowns, but just to connect the dots, the previous slide's blue and this is inclusive of that.
Okay, I think this is probably a good time to point out that, yes, there's going to be increased sales tax, excuse me, property tax revenue coming in. That does not all come to the city of Folsom. And it's also very important for people to understand that with regard to property tax, single-family homes do not pull their weight. The property tax that is paid on a single-family home does not pay for the services that that home generates. It's, we get significantly better coverage from a property tax standpoint for multifamily and higher density. And that's something that most people are not aware of, and I think people need to be.
Yeah, and I also do, I think Stacy was alluding to this, but I do want to make clear there's no guarantee we can fund all the things in blue either. You know, these are big requests. Stacy mentioned, we're right in the middle of budget conversations right now. Department heads have put together the most reasonable lists you have ever seen. And they include positions that are specifically connected to what is being developed south of 50. And we have a very, very tiny pot that we're working from. So I don't think, you know, and Stacy, feel free to, you know, express if you disagree, but I don't think it's a given at all that everything in blue is funded and that's concern number one. And then concern number two is everything that's in black up there that is, you know, really, really important as well. I just want to make clear that when we're talking about this $20 million of unfunded annual needs, this isn't just, you know, what I maybe used to say. And I've been sitting in budget meetings at lower levels of this organization for, I've been here over 17 years, you know, for probably 15 years I've been in budget meetings, you know, on that budget committee. And, you know, there were many years where you would, of course, we're going to cover all that. Now let's talk about the fun stuff. And, you know, now we're at this place where there's no of course, you know, and we're just having to set aside requests that we have, I have seen as city manager now over and over and over again. And just this morning, we were again, I was like, can't do this one again. And it's just, that's not a, that's not like a wish list. It's like what we absolutely should be doing.
And I think it's important also to clarify that the stuff that was shown in blue for the plan area, it's not funded. It was just separated out so that the council and anybody that's watching this meeting would know what's north of the freeway, what's south of the freeway, but none of it's funded.
Agreed. What I mean to say is, yes, when there is a plan area is growing, at least the 34% of the property tax ratio is also growing proportionally. That's all I'm making here.
Yes, the property tax revenues are increasing, but they're doing exactly what we projected them to do. So there are no surprises and we're already considering that as we have these conversations.
Agreed. I'm not saying, again, my point is, I know, I don't want to drag this meeting too long. I do hear all the blue highlighted in the previous slides has to come through the council for approval, but at least there will be some funding coming from the Folsom South revenue from the property taxes the house says. That's all I'm saying.
But it's included in the number. That's not an additional source of revenue. That's already been accounted for in the projections.
So let me then say this. If we increase no, none of those blues and we are still getting on an average 800 homes is being moved in on that side and that much property tax is being generated, so no additional blues, so is it still going to be $2.3 million deficit? Yes.
If we didn't provide any, let me see if I'm answering this question, Stacy, and you can agree. If we didn't provide services to the people that have bought these homes south of 50, I don't think there would be a gap. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct. Then property tax would be going up as we had expected, but our expenditures would not be going up as fast because we wouldn't be providing services down there. So we would just be receiving the benefit of the revenue and not the increase in expenses.
So in order to provide the services, then we have to fulfill some of the obligations in the blue?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, we absolutely must. I mean, and that's the point.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions about the, from Stacy's point of view from finances?
It's only one for you, Elaine. On the sales tax, I do see, I heard loud and clear from Tom, right? All those three things which is causing to decrease the sales tax is not going to go away. First one is not in our control. The things and how people are buying it, it's not in our control. It's across the nation. And the last one, how much people can afford, I don't know how much we have control on that one too. So in between, he was explaining, we do have few areas, probably we can look into it. Are we thinking to have more, a deep dive analysis or workshop kind of thing, including the, you know, Chamber of Commerce and our business owners or some experts to see whether we can increase some revenues, for example, what Sarah was saying, rather than going for the Starbucks coffee, wrong example, sorry, something else. So are we going to do any other focused session to understand that?
If that's the council's consensus direction to put resources into that, I am completely on board. But it's also part of why we're doing this whole thing is we're actively trying to engage just that conversation. But if you're looking for, say, you know, a consultant or a consulting firm to do this, you know, complete analysis or, you know, something, Mr. Galliardi in, you know, combination with a company like that and you want to invest money in doing that, I need consensus direction that that's what we're going to do and we need to pay for it. So that's what I've been talking about is I'm open to all kinds of strategies, but I've also been emphasizing, and I hate to have to say it, but almost every one of those costs money and we have to realize that and we have to choose carefully here.
YK, I will say, and I was going to give a report out on the committee that Rosario and I are chairing at the next meeting in our council comments, but, you know, that committee, the scope of that committee is just to look at city-owned properties and how to possibly better utilize those to generate additional revenue. But I think the next step, and there's expertise on that committee, is to look at potentially unzoned parcels in the city of Folsom or active properties. And as Tom was saying, perhaps rezone some of them to a designation that would allow for more sales tax revenue, property tax revenue. When he talked about capitalizing on existing economic concentrations, for example, the thing that came to my mind, the auto mall on Folsom Boulevard, right? I think that would be the next step for some kind of council committee to look at private property versus the city property that we're looking at right now.
Thank you. Yep. I'm looking for, in addition to that, are there any, and I know I was at the investors conference the other day and there were so many creative things they were talking about because it's not just the Folsom is facing this one, right? The trends has been changed. I personally feel, I think we have to deep dive besides what our subcommittee is doing from council. And at least we can tell residents, we have done enough. I think that's all we can get, the revenue increase and the other alternatives are whatever we are going to propose to public. So that's my thought. Thank you.
That's a fair comment. You know, we are of course focusing on what we as a city organization can control right out of the gate, you know, because we can't necessarily decide for private companies or private landowners what they are or aren't going to do. But we're just trying to do our best to present the problem statement to you, present some, you know, possible opportunities and solutions and then go from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Fair statement. Absolutely.
And a side note, thank you, Sarah and Rosario. I know that's additional work in addition to. Thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, I also heard on February 8th, some comments and questions about what our employees are paid, how they're compensated, what do their compensation packages look like? I heard the word perks, you know, what kind of perks do they get? Wanting to just understand, because that's a significant part of our budget and so rightfully so, questions kind of naturally emerged about, hey, let's take a look at that. So I'd like to invite our human resources manager, Allison Garcia, who by the way is fairly new in the role, is just extraordinary and doing a great job so far and I'm very, very pleased with everything she's doing. And so Allison's going to provide a summary of kind of how we approach these things and how our employees' compensation is measured up.
Thank you, Elaine. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I'm Allison Garcia, human resources manager. At last month's special meeting, council members inquired about employee compensation, specifically how we establish our compensation packages and different types of employee compensation. So today I'll review these questions. To note, the information I'll be sharing is provided on the MOUs that are on our city website for full transparency. These MOUs detail the benefits and compensation for employees represented by each respective group. Salary information for the executive management team is also posted on the city's website. Each employee group negotiation begins with a compensation survey, typically conducted by the city, comparing our total compensation package, both pay and benefits, against local jurisdictions. This is a dynamic process as we evaluate changes to benefits in line with market changes. The list of cities have been negotiated between the city of Folsom and each union as they represent the jurisdictions we usually compete against for employees. Depending on the MOU, we compare against the following cities, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, Sacramento.
Allison, you don't need to read it. We can see it.
Through these surveys, we look at the entire compensation package, again, both pay and benefits, to develop a robust compensation package for our employees, striving to fit to the middle, to high middle, ensuring we're neither the highest nor lowest in the region. This allows us to recruit and retain the highest quality candidates within our region, remaining economically competitive against our rivaling employers. As part of the negotiation process, after gathering this information and negotiating with the union, we then present information to you for support, direction and approval of all salaries and benefits. As you recall, we recently completed the Folsom Police Officers Association MOU and will repeat the same process for our other four MOUs over the course of this calendar year. Once ratified, the MOU is implemented for the term of the agreement. The longer-term contracts provide much-needed stability and offer great opportunities to grow meaningful relationships with our unions and staff. We offer additional types of employee compensation that are comparable to cities in our region. If we don't remain competitive in our benefits package, employees, both represented and unrepresented, may look elsewhere because they don't feel fairly compensated. These different types of employee compensation depend on each bargaining unit. They include education incentive, the city employs an educated workforce and as such incentivizes staff for obtaining higher education degrees. The city has generally moved away from percentage-based rates, so the majority of our education incentives are now fixed rates. Fire and police unions continue to pay their degree-seeking employees a percentage of their base pay. One competitive advantage we offer is that of tuition reimbursement. This allows employees to pay upfront higher education costs to continue their education while employed at the city. The city offers deferred compensation benefits to our represented and unrepresented employees. So this includes employees from our mid-management group as well as the executive management team. Fire, police and Local 39 MOUs offer uniform allowance for represented employees. This benefit allows employees to purchase clothing or footwear to perform their job. With the exception of the chief of police and fire chief, the city does not provide take-home vehicles for employees. Represented employees are compensated at the IRS mileage rate for work-related travel. Tech and cell allowances are provided to employees to ensure availability 24/7 to respond to immediate inquiries. These are nominal costs. Only employees required to use their phone as part of their job are authorized to receive this benefit. Longevity pay is offered to employees to recognize and reward their length of service to the city. As Stacy mentioned, we actually have removed this benefit for new employees going forward. Placement of salaries for the executive management team are determined within a given range for each position. Ranges are established again by completing a regional compensation survey. Benefits these employees receive are directly correlated to their job and include cell allowance, car allowance and like our represented employees' tuition reimbursement. Picking apart the benefits affects our employees' total compensation packages. In order to remain competitive in this market, we must continue offering these comparable benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And I did just want to add that, that last comment that she made of when you start kind of pulling out and saying, well, let's not do this and let's not do that. I've had, just in my time as city manager, I can count five or six times where employees have wandered in and said, look, this is my friend. He started in the same position at this other jurisdiction at the same time. You know, we both started, you know, there and look, he's taking home so much more pay at this point. And then we can have, it's an opportunity for a conversation about total compensation. And what usually is the end result of that conversation is you need to not only look at your salary, you need to look at your whole package. And again, Folsom's total compensation package, we strive to be in that middle, high middle, and that's where we compete quite well. It's, you know, not necessarily just on salary. So these things or some of these things become important. So just wanted to mention that.
And I'm just going to add, having, you know, spent the last 24 years. And I'm just going to add, having, you know, spent the last 24 years in dealing with these contract negotiations as they come up, the vast majority of these items are very low dollars by comparison to the actual salary. So we could pick these apart, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't come to probably $200,000 a year, let alone 20 million.
I, I would agree with that, Carrie, with the exception that if we, if you continue to look at, well, it's as low, it's, it's a low amount, at some point, those low amounts do add up. And so, I mean, I, for me, I just, I'm curious to know, like, what are some of those allowances that come out? Do you, do we have them specifically by financial impact to the budget?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Alison.
Um, I don't have them here presently, but I can take a look and report back.
Yeah. Cause I, cause I, that, that's what I would be curious is. And just for clarification, so car allowances are only for the police and fire chiefs?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The car allowances?
So the, the take-home vehicles are for the, the two chiefs, yes.
Take-home vehicles, but car allowances are only for the chief of police and chief of fire?
No, car allowances are also for our executive management team.
So, okay.
It's the expectation when you have an auto allowances generally that you're using your car pretty regularly to make your way around town in the region and the state, you know, or whatever, for, you know, work-related purposes. And it's, it's again, a very standard, you know, additional pay that's offered at that level.
And just for historical reference, we used to actually have vehicles for many of those people, for all of those people basically, that are now simply getting a car allowance. And we eliminated those vehicles and all the costs associated with that. And then we decided that it was actually more cost-effective for the city to have the car allowance than it was for us to pay the actual travel time, given that it has to be paid at the, at the federal rate. So these were all put in place in order to create more cost-effective benefit system.
So for Alison or Stacy, when you look at some of those additional benefits, do those get counted in your salary when you're figuring out your, your PERS benefit?
Yeah, some of them do and some of them don't. Some are PERS-able and some are not.
Okay.
And that becomes honestly a pretty robust discussion as part of labor negotiations of, you know, focusing on things that are PERS-able versus non-PERS-able. So, you know, it's, it's PERS rules, not our rules.
Any other questions for Alison?
All right.
Thank you, very good.
Thank you, thank you, Alison. And then back on February 8th, there was a conversation about the use of overtime in the fire department. And then there was this discussion about use of overtime in the police department. And then there was some conversation about police response times. So my point is, I thought I would just have each chief talk about the use of operation in their department and then transition from there to talk about the response times. So Chief Casano, if you could be first up, that would be great.
Thank you, Elaine. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. So I'm going to hopefully get to explain our overtime and the budget and why our overtime expenses generally exceed what we're authorized in, in, in overtime. So the first four slides that I'm going to show, they graph, are graphic representations of the use of overtime within the department over the last five fiscal years. And then we'll talk about some of the reasons as to why. So comparison of overtime for the last five fiscal years, the current fiscal year projected amount is highlighted in yellow. One of the biggest reasons fiscal year 2021, and this fiscal year is so high, has a lot to do with the impact of COVID. The fire department had challenges, not only with employees testing positive, but all the other associated mandates with contract tracing and then COVID family leave. As everyone is aware, in 2020, COVID surges required contract tracing, including 10 days off from work. So as you can imagine.
I think you said contract, I think you meant contact.
Did I say contract?
Yeah.
I meant contact. Contact tracing. So as you could imagine, within the fire, the, the fire stations, anybody that ever tested positive, anybody that was in that station with them, working with them, is going to also test or contact trace positive, so they were sent home. There was a very short time period that the fire department had more than half of its employees off. And, and that, and I will emphasize this, to the credit of the women and men of the fire department, the remaining members were able to meet that challenge and then continue providing full-service delivery to the community. So this is a very colorful graph and it represents a comparison of overtime by month and fiscal year. July through November are typically the months that the fire department provides mutual aid agreements to the California Office of Emergency Services, OES, for fires throughout the state. There is an upcoming slide that will depict OES reimbursements that the city gets compared to what our overtime budget is. I went back one.
So fancy with the transitions there, Chief Casano.
I didn't, I didn't mean to have transitions, so, sorry. So this slide is a graphical comparison of overtime by rank throughout the last five years. So as you can imagine, the firefighter rank is higher only because it represents about 54% of the line force that's working. So here's the graph that kind of compares overtime expenditures along with the OES reimbursements. That green line that goes across is actually our annual budgeted amount every year. So there have been years that we were substantially higher than that green line and we'll get into that in a few slides as, as to why. And this is one of the reasons why.
Chief, one quick question.
Yep.
Why are we not budgeting for that overtime number to increase somewhat as we move forward?
It, it does increase annually every year.
Well, I know it does, that's why I'm wondering, we're not showing it, showing it as a budget item.
I, I, we, we, it increases annually every year, but it just doesn't increase as much as what we end up typically using. So, and, and again, this is, it's hard to predict the reasons why, which we'll get into in a few slides. But, so this, this is one of the reasons why it's an MOU issue between the city of Folsom and 522. And this deals with bid vacation and vacation use. So that no more than 15% rounded the whole number. When you have 22 people on shift, that equals three positions. So every single day, there can be three vacant positions. And what that means is that three people are off, that requires three overtime positions that day. And I don't, I can't find very many days in a calendar year where there's not at least three people off. And again, in a couple of slides, we'll, we'll discuss that even a little bit further.
Chief, before you go on, just so you don't have to come over, can you go back to the one that shows the OES thing? I just want to take one of these years and break it down.
Sure.
Okay, so just because I can see this one better. So fiscal year 21, you, there were 30,994 overtime hours, which was a cost of $3,489,324, right?
Yes.
Okay. And 1.1 million of that was due to mutual aid with OES.
Correct.
And so the red, the difference is, that's just overtime for our own?
That's the, that's the city's cost in overtime.
Right, okay. But, and then, but my understanding was before that when we actually do the mutual aid with OES, the reimbursement amount from them is greater than our cost. So it actually is financially beneficial for us to do that.
Correct. It is. There are some administrative fees that are in, in those reimbursements.
Okay. But, but that's just not depicted on that slide right there, right?
It's included, I believe, in this. Well, it, it probably is not totally included because these were just hours that were depicted from a, a, a report ran in our staffing software.
So is the yellow amount, the amount that we received from OES?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Chief, one more time. So the red one is the difference, that's the actual overtime, that's what you just now said.
That's the actual overtime expenditure.
Yeah. If you don't mind, can you give us, you know, one scenario, you know, a, a troop went to fight a fire, which is a state fire, and you have few vacant positions you don't have there. So if we can give a, a simple scenario, how that works and the dollars, I just want to see it. Three people, you usually have the 15% ratio.
Yeah, so typically, we'll, we'll send out a, a type 3 apparatus, a grass unit with four personnel. Part of the, the agreement with OES or the California Fire Assistance is that, you know, each position has a certain monetary amount and then on top of that, there's an administrative cost. The vehicle itself is not the city of Folsom's, it is owned by OES and so we don't get that reimbursement for the, the vehicle, we get it for our personnel. And then we also have overhead assignments that, that we can send out that deals with either the line medics or any of the safety officers and things like that. And those, those come back fully reimbursed plus administrative fee.
So on that angle, you mentioned cost of the firefighter plus administrative fee.
Yeah, the, the other cost that it also includes is, you know, part of the cost of the overtime person filling their spot.
Okay, yeah, that, that's where I'm going.
Back here at home.
That's where I'm going.
Yes.
The cost of that resource whom we are sending, just, I'm going to take, for example, dollars, $50, for example, right? No, let's go for $100, right?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, that's a good amount, right? And, and in addition, we will add some administrative, whatever that percentage, I don't have to worry about. So for those four people, now we are going to have four overtime positions in that specific station or in those shared stations. Is overtime 1.5%?
Yes.
Which is $100, is now becoming $150 here for a city?
Correct. Just the same as when.
Yeah, yeah.
The individuals that are out of county are on their off day, they are getting paid time and a half and they're reimbursed at that same time and a half.
Right. So we are more or less, except 2020, consistently, you know, trying to send our troops to support our neighbors' state.
Absolutely. There have been times that, especially within the last two years, that we've had to refuse that service because we, if we can't staff things here at home, we're certainly not going to send it out. So our, I mean, our community comes first, but there have been times where we had to reject those, you know, requests.
And that was a really hard conversation for Chief to come in and say to me, you know, I think it's like we desire always to be mutually partners, but he, you know, it's just been a perfect storm of situations and he's just like, it's such, it's so hard to say this, but we, we can't do that right now.
Yeah. So in this analysis, I think having additional firefighters probably is going to be less expensive to city at some extent because $100 and we are paying consistently $100. I'm just for a.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, in a few slides, we'll actually look into that and, and maybe the, hopefully that'll enlighten that a little bit. So this, this is an average number of personnel off daily throughout the fiscal years. So during fiscal year 2021, having, having an average of 4.88 personnel off each day is extremely significant. That means for every person off, that's an overtime shift. And when there's 4.88, that's a big deal. So this type of staffing ultimately results in mandatory hires, or we also call forced hires, meaning that the employee, they don't have a choice. You have to stay at work and it's just so that we can keep the apparatus staffed for the city. So if I can call your attention to the total number of hours in fiscal year 2021, you'll notice that the overtime hours from a previous slide are not as high. And why? And that is because, well, all vacant positions, they cumulatively, cumulatively create additional physical, mental, and burden on the remaining firefighters to fill those shifts. And it also provide, or it also causes extra funding for the city of Folsom in overtime costs. So to maintain a healthy workforce, the tough decision to close one of our medic units temporarily was made. We did this twice. We did it early, summer of 2021, and then we did it again, the very beginning of 2020, well, actually, the end of night, or 2021 and the beginning of 2022. This decision relieved staffing of two personnel overtime every single day. So the medic unit has subsequently been reopened since the new recruits graduated Academy 21-2, and that happened January of this year. So the last two years have been extremely challenging for my administrative staff and the firefighter rank to maintain staffing requirements. These items, well, I had some highlighted items that changed a little bit, but I'll talk about each one. The unfilled vacant positions, these occurred due to retirements and to some promotional processes. Resignations are currently at the top of my concern list because the younger firefighters continually come in and they're immediately looking at other departments. And, and this is becoming a big deal because when they give their two-week notice, that's standard for any work, however, it takes the department about four to five months minimum to hire somebody in their spot and get them online. And that just is from the job announcement, testing, the interview, medical background check, and then the 10-week internal academy that we run. We've talked about COVID leave. There were multiple employees off during 2020 and 2021 with long-term injuries. And again, these just compound, those personnel being off. FMLA, CFLA were some big reasons that we had some missing personnel. They were, some employees were utilizing it quite frequently. We have since created, we've since looked at that policy, we've changed it internally within our department. So it kind of ratchets it down as to how the employees can actually use it by the letter of, of the law. Vacation times, like we've already mentioned in the previous slide, when they're allowed three off per shift, they're going to use it and they do. And every day, we, we do have those three personnel off, on top of anybody that's calls in sick or has a long-term injury or is on military leave, any of the above. So the constant staffing model, we went to this back in 2006. And really what that means is that if any one person takes off, it requires an overtime to fill that position, to keep that unit in service. The Folsom Fire Department's frontline operation, it's organized into three shifts, A, B, and C, that operate on a 48, 96-hour work schedule. Our employees work a total of 56 hours a week, totaling 2,912 hours annually. There are two distinct ways to minimize overtime expenditures. One is reduce service to the community, or two, increase staffing, which the city manager has allowed us to do with three limited-term firefighter positions. These give each shift one person over, which has helped out tremendously. Some of the neighboring agencies have authorized staffing to the number that they are allowed off per day. So when I mentioned in the MOU that when it shows three people are allowed off every day, some of our neighboring agencies, that's what they have staffing-wise, is that there are three persons overstaffed on every shift every day. Today's culture is, is very different and what staffing model we used to use just does not work in these current days. just does not work in these current days. They're not working. So this is not unique to Folsom, this is throughout the entire state of California.
And just a really quick, Ken, is there ever, I know you don't have the staffing for it, but is there ever a time where somebody can work overtime, but then take it off as comp time? Does that ever happen?
Yes. They, they have that ability. They're allowed, I believe it's 48 hours of comp time that they can actually build up. So it's not, they can't just keep accumulating that. But a lot of people use that because they, they would rather have their time off than be paid.
And, and that's, again, that's also something that we negotiated, I don't remember how long ago, but-
Correct.
It, it had gotten to the point where we had people that had hundreds and hundreds of, of comp time built up, that we were paying them at time and a half. And it was, it was very, very expensive, and if they decided to cash it out at the end of the year, we never knew what was going to happen. We were writing very, very big checks at the end of the year, unexpectedly.
Correct. So we'll move into the on-scene response times. These are our average response times per calendar year for emergency incidents within the city limits. This number is from the time of alarm in the fire station to arrival on scene. That's turnout time plus travel time. Most of the stations, we've installed turnout timers, and, and that's near the apparatus bay doors, and that just gives that crew the ability to quickly observe what standard they are meeting. And, and they've been pretty helpful, and, and the crews seem to enjoy them, and try to get out a lot quicker than, than they can. So this data also has inherent factors that skew the outcomes, such as MCT, mechanical failure, human error, traffic, and light rail. So the human error, for example, would be, the unit arrives on scene, they forget to push the button that they've arrived on scene, so that time keeps going, it never ends. And they, when, when you run a report, there's no way of knowing that unless you look at every single individual call in the, in the CAD response.
And does the responsible party have to then buy ice cream for the crew that day?
We should institute something like that.
But, so Chief, the average response times are remarkably consistent.
Correct.
But when you look at 2020 and 2021, the number of incidents is, you know, three times as high. So how, I mean, that's pretty remarkable. How are you able to maintain those response times when you have so many more incidents that you're responding to?
Well, again, these are, these are first, or, this is, these are average times, and this is first responder on scene, meaning that if the engine arrives first, it stops that clock. If a medic arrives first, it stops that clock. We've been, we've gotten much busier over the years. There was certainly that period of COVID when things sort of, you know, went down a little bit, but they're right back up to where they were, and we gradually increase our call volume every single year. And again, January, February is only this year so far, so, so we're on track to probably be higher than we were last year.
God.
And there, so you see the total incidents on there-
Oh, I see. It's only October, December, it's not a whole year. Okay, that's what I was missing. I was like, how are you, okay.
I was just, I was just going to explain that, because it-
Got it.
Our software only allowed us, it's when we changed software to Image Trend, and that's when we did it back in 2019 in October. So we can only go back and look at data from that point.
Okay, I wasn't figuring, understanding how that could possibly be right. Okay.
Yeah, so you basically would, you know, if it was average, you'd have to multiply that by six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do want to add that it, it is appearing, you know, I don't make any commitments right now, but even with having to take down the medic a couple of times, it looks like we're on track to hit our budget target for ambulance revenue, which is a huge relief, because we were worried that that was going to come in under. So keep your fingers crossed on that.
So, and additionally, during 2021 also, the majority of the calendar year was without Station 38, and that left a huge kind of hole in the city that we had to respond to from, you know, lengthier response times. So as you can see, the Fire Department emergency response times are, are fairly good. And unless there's any questions?
Any questions for Chief Casano?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, you know, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And Battalion Chief and all your staff, you guys are doing awesome job. One thing you emphasized while you are explaining the reasons for the vacation, and the big one is resignations.
Correct.
I know, I met several of your team, you know, in all stations, you, you enjoy, you build a family-friendly, you know, workplace. But what is that main reason, or one or two reasons, the resignation? Is this because of the overtime stress you made already? If they are there, they have to continue, or the salaries, financial?
These are young firefighters that are going to make $50 a week somewhere else.
Because I think a lot of personnel have been leaving for, for different reasons.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it, it varies from ambulances and being a transporting agency to, you know, pay packages and benefits and things like that, to, you know, some people just like working for a bigger organization. But this, this hasn't happened in the past. I mean, when, when people came to Folsom, that was like where everybody wanted to be. And I certainly hope we can get back to that.
Yeah. The reason why I was asking that, I know, is maybe if the exit interviews are happening, and they're giving some reasonably, some information, which we can process, and we can bring it to our-
Well, if I understand correctly, the retirement has a lot to do with it. People could delete, people can go to a different agency and get a retirement at a, was it lower age for a higher percentage?
Well, that-
Is that part of it?
Well, not, not so much anymore, because all these new, newer employees who are leaving, they're not the classic PERS employees. They, they're, they're at the 2.7 at 57, that's not going to change. That's, I believe that's a law.
So wherever they go, it's going to be the same?
It's going to be the same wherever they go. I, I think they're, I haven't really, or they haven't really explained in an exit interview that in-depth, whether they're looking at, at pay, or, you know, benefits, or if, is it, is it the step increases? They haven't really been that bold enough to come out and say it.
Is it fair to say then that it's your younger firefighters that are leaving, not your seasonal, not your more seasoned firefighters?
Correct. They're, they're younger. However, you know, within our fire department, 50, 60% of the employees have less than five years. So we're, we're fairly young fire department right now. And, you know, when somebody that's been there for five years, I, I guess they're towards the top of the seniority list, they, they are leaving. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's one of my biggest concerns, of the resignations.
Ken, where are they leaving to go to?
They've left for Roseville, they've left for Oakland, they've left for Contra Costa.
I, I think one of the important things to keep in mind there, if they're going to Oakland, Contra Costa County, I frankly don't know why anybody would want to be a firefighter in Oakland, I wouldn't. But I, I think we have to assume that if you're going to the Bay Area, it's going to be a much bigger paycheck.
It certainly is a much bigger paycheck, and again-
Big paycheck, but bigger cost of living.
Correct.
Chief has shared with me, and he mentioned a little earlier also, is there, there is somewhat of a, a, you know, some of the younger firefighters are looking for kind of high-action stations, and, you know, they want to be out there like, you know, fighting fires like daily, you know, and a community like Oakland, I don't want to misspeak for you, Chief, but I think, I think they might, looking for that kind of action is appealing.
They do. When, when I said they want to go to a bigger department, that's sort of what I meant. A, a much busier place. And, you know, that's fine. It's just that, that's not what Folsom used to be, and that's not what our fire department used to be. You know, I can't really recall as many resignations in the last five years as my entire history with this department.
And I, I just want to say though, that what, what you said about kind of the, the change in mentality, when, when you were coming up through the ranks, it was kind of like, if you had to work overtime, you worked overtime, right? And, and that meant a lot of sacrifices in terms of your family life and all that, and, and the, the men and women now are seeking much more of a balance. But that's something that I've heard not just from Folsom, but from other departments.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody who's Division Chief for Livermore Pleasanton, I mean, he has the same-
This is throughout the entire state. I don't know a single department that doesn't say the exact same thing, that the culture has definitely changed. What, what used to be important, focusing on the job and, and wanting to take overtime, just not, not so much for the, the money, but for the sheer fact that I want to be here today because I don't want to miss the big one or the, the neat call. They don't, that mentality is not there right now. It's more of a balance. You know, they want to do their required time of 48 hours, and then they want to be off work.
More of a work-life balance situation.
Yeah, it's just a dynamic change that, that all departments are dealing with, and it's, it really focuses around changing the staffing model.
Is it also fair to say that, you know, California's gone through some really serious wildfires, you know, in the last five to seven years? And I imagine that that pressure is impacting all firefighters and all departments, because if there are, if there's a, a draw to places like Santa Rosa, and, you know, up by Lake Tahoe, and in Southern California, if we're seeing these sort of trends happening, it has to have an impact on the industry as firefighters, and, and the pressure and the stress that it's causing, and the need for them to go places, and now they're working more. And so now, all of a sudden, there's no, there's very little work-life balance.
Yes, all true. And that's, that's part of the challenge that we face even today in, in some of our recruitment of new firefighters. They're, the numbers are just not what they used to be.
Yeah, and then you throw in the kinds of factors that Chief was alluding to before, where at one point, you know, I was sending you notes that, you know, we're experiencing a very significant COVID cluster within our fire department. At one point, he's got half the usual number of personnel, so people who've just finished a shift are being pulled by, right back in, and then right back in again, and, you know, just the exhaustion that goes with that.
Yeah.
Chief, I just have one more question. So when you talked about, you know, it's, on an average day, you've got three people out for whatever, vacation, sick, whatever, so you have to have three other people-
On overtime.
Right. So that's one of my questions. So those people are on overtime.
Correct.
So, so I'm assuming the ideal scenario would be that we, we have additional firefighters who are basically, let's just say, roving firefighters. They're not on overtime, it's their normal work day, and they're going to whatever station needs them that day.
Yes. Before, in, before 2006, the department had, I don't know if we were one or two person per shift overstaffed, which means that, that those, those personnel kind of were in a float pool, and for their, any given reason that somebody took leave, they would just fill that spot. So instead of having three overtime persons on, you'd have one. And that, that does make a huge difference. Because like I said, not everybody wants to or is willing to work overtime. There's still a few, and, you know, I, I'm very thankful that they do.
But having said that, I think if we were to go back and look at those budgets before 2006, not a dramatic difference in the amount of overtime. Both police, more so fire than police, but-
It could be.
The overtime has always been significantly more than was budgeted. That's, that's one of the reasons why we, we shifted back and forth, but, but at the end of the day, honestly, it didn't make a lot of difference in, in the overall budget.
And, and I don't think it, you know, I would say that now with today's culture, it would help tremendously to be overstaffed, because like I said, there are not a lot of people that are willing to and want to work overtime, and when that occurs, and you start mandating and force hiring the employees, it, it becomes a very big mental push on them as to, you know, just their general well-being and their home life. And I, I heard that constantly when this was occurring, especially during, during COVID.
And just something as, you know, what sounds so simple of just trying to get Chief one over on each shift became this, you know, in our current constrained climate, this, you know, crazy, you know, manipulation, trying to figure out moving positions, freezing positions, everything, just to be able to do that, when really there should be much more buffer for these shifts, and much more relief for these personnel.
Yeah.
And I think-
I have one more question.
I think if you add the whole thing about COVID to this too, when you get firefighters that are working, you know, triple time or whatever they were doing, not all of their friends are firefighters, so all of their friends that are not firefighters are working from home, and hanging out with their kids, having lunch, going to the park. And that had to, you know, that had to weigh on a lot of people. And those people were not being exposed to COVID because they were working at home.
True.
They're home, they were completely safe, where our firefighters were, you know, taking people that may or may not have COVID to the hospital, and, you know, doing whatever it is that they had to do when the rest of the universe wasn't working that way.
That is true.
I have one more question. So would increasing the usage of contracts help your department? For example, ambulance, using other ambulance contracts to help with that? Is that, is that something that would help your department?
Well, that would, that would just kind of benefit the, the calls. I mean, if, you know, we're, we're in the city, and I, you know, I have pride in the fact that we provide our own services to the community. You know, that, that's walking down a slippery slope when you start talking about contract ambulances, and it gets into our 209 rights to be able to transport. I, you know, that would just help with the actual incidents, and who's actually running those calls. We would still have to provide first responder response, and we still have to keep our apparatuses staffed on a 24-hour basis, so.
And that's not something 522 is going to take kindly to.
Well, yeah, I, I just think of reducing the impact, especially in times like now where there's a shortage. How can, you know, what, what are some of our options out there that could help our department in the stress, and give a little more work-life balance?
I think if it makes it a little more clear, I'm not, I'm not talking about the number of incidences. We certainly are handling that fine as a fire department. I'm just talking about having personnel to sit in those seats to, to provide that service.
And having the capacity to pay for just providing a little buffer. That's the noun I use a lot. It's just not-
It just gets difficult when you have multiple employees that, at the same time, they're off on an injury, and a long-term injury, where they have surgery, and they're off for eight months. Well, that's eight months of the year that that person requires overtime on his shift every single day. And when you have multiple of those employees, coupled with COVID, coupled with military leave, it, it's very impactful.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment. I know, I am going to tag team with Sarah, when you mentioned one person roaming. Right now, on an average, we are spending 36,000 overtime hours, and one of your slide was giving us-
Probably about that.
About that, which equals to 18 full-time employees, on an average, 20,000 hours, right? So I'm not, you know, equating that. We are already spending that much manpower, dollar amount as overtime. At least, you know, maybe just a thought for our council when the budget season is coming. And you just now mentioned, Chief, our city manager offered you three temporary firefighters, and I felt the voice, you said, "It is a big relief for you," at least, right? So probably we, as a, you know, administration, has to think one more time. We are already spending the money. Can we spend slightly in a different way so that we can offer resources? We don't want to go through our staff, stress us to forcefully work overtime. That's a thought.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not quite sure those numbers work out. I, I don't think the overtime being spent is the equivalent of 18 new employees.
Now, what, the way we used to compare-
Certainly not the cost for 18 new employees.
The way we used to compare overtime to a new employee, and it's gone back and forth over the years, right now, it's, they're about even. The cost of a new employee as opposed to paying overtime. And I'm just telling you that, that the general sentiment from the current culture in the fire department is that having more employees is, is a better staffing model than what we are currently doing, that constant staffing.
I, I, I say amen to that, too.
Thank you, Chief. That, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And now I'm going to have Chief Hillman do the same, and Chief Hillman's going to walk through his use of overtime in the police department, and then also police response times.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Rick Hillman, Police Chief. I'm going to echo a lot of what Chief Casano said. Public safety, it's the same all the way around with our staffing, staffing issues, and how we respond to our calls and such. So I'm going to start off with telling you a little bit about the police department. We have 79 sworn positions. That includes me, all the way down to our newest officer. We allocate about 62% of our workforce. We allocate about 62% of our workforce to patrol, that's the meat and potatoes of any department. So those are the ones that are going to be affecting response times. We have people in investigations to investigate the crimes that the officers on patrol, the reports that they take. We have people assigned to traffic right now, we have three officers and a sergeant assigned to traffic. And then we have some assigned to administration, being the commanders, lieutenants, and a sergeant that handles professional standards. We have about 13% vacancy right now with 10 officer positions that were down. But we're actively recruiting for that. It is difficult, like Chief Casano had said, people are going all over the place and there's no real one reason why. We've seen some people retiring in our organization. In the month of November and December, I think five people left our organization just to move out of state and get out of the profession. Our city, we've divided up our city into five different geographical areas that we call BEATs. We have three shifts.
Do they look like our districts? Kidding.
Actually, on, I think my little notes here is no. So we have five BEATs, we have three shifts per day, we call them day shift, swing shift, and graveyard shift. Officers work between 10 hours and 12 and a half hour shifts. So that depends on, our weekday teams work 10-hour days, four days a week, our weekend teams work 12 and a half hour days, three days a week, and then they have a payback day that we use for training. So within a two-month period, all of our staff can get the same amount of training. As I said, we have four people assigned to our traffic unit right now, two people contracted to the schools as school resource officers and three people assigned to our crime suppression unit and they mostly handle mental health issues and homelessness.
That traffic Monday through Friday does not mean that we don't have people working traffic on the weekends.
So every officer works traffic, they all can write a ticket. I even have some tickets that I've written in the past year, so, yeah. But these are officers that are specifically there for traffic enforcement. Those are also the officers that come out and do the major incidents, major accident responses. So when we have a fatal collision or a close to fatal collision, only our traffic officers investigate those. They're very detailed and depth and then we have some equipment that they use and only they have been trained to do. So I'll go over our response times, this is our response times to all calls.
But do you have the same software as the fire department?
No, but I did use their slide. I like their colors and I thought, hey, may as well make it equal. So, and this is our average response time for the past four years, doing the same thing with this year, just January and February right now. And that's where we stand with our average response times.
Rick, just, just as a point of clarification, I, I would venture to guess that the difference between the police department and the fire department is that any call that goes into the fire department is basically an emergency of the highest order.
Well, the police will make fun of that, but I'm sure that that's true. Yeah. I'm not going to say if I've seen them going to Rayleigh's with their lights on, but that's just my little dig. So, no, honestly, honestly, this response time, I can go into a little bit more detail.
No, 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 I just, I just want for people that are watching this, because these numbers are basically double what the fire department is.
Yes.
But this is something that is, okay, my car was broken into sometime last night and, you know, so that's, you know, that's a response time that, okay, you know, getting their lights flashing is not going to solve that issue.
Yes.
Car accident, somebody brandishing a weapon, that sort of thing.
Yes.
I would venture to guess response times are dramatically less than the 12.07 minutes that are listed there.
They would probably be about seven minutes, I'd say.
It's a big average.
Looking at that, yeah. For the emergency calls, it's about seven minutes. Where it differs is that the brandishing a weapon, for instance, usually an officer will wait for a backup. So where the first-in unit may be seven minutes, the next unit in may be eight minutes and that's really where we go. This response time is when someone calls our communication center, a 911 call or non-emergency call, a dispatcher picks that up. We have two dispatchers on duty all the time. One is dedicated to radio, they don't answer the phones, they just do the radio. Sometimes we have three, if there's a supervisor that we've put now into dispatch. So the other two just answer telephones and put calls in for service. When they enter the call in for service, that starts the clock ticking and then when the officer is dispatched and until their final arrival, that's what that response time is. So from the time the dispatcher enters the call to the time that the officer arrives is what our response time is and it's, it's, we do have different levels of calls, priorities, one, two, and three, and this is all of our calls for service, the average response time. It's also the, the number of calls that includes calls for service and traffic stops or other self-initiated activity by officers. So for instance, in 2021, we had roughly 90,000 people that called our communication center. From that, 38,000 were created as calls for service and there was another 12,000 officer-initiated activity. So that was down from the year before where they had roughly 95,000 calls into the communication center, 41,000 calls for service and 17,000 officer-initiated activities. With fewer officers, there's more for each officer to do and less time for self-initiated activity or basically patrolling. Most of the time when you see officers, they're heading to a call versus just patrolling and looking for things to do.
I have a question quick. So are there instances where a patrol car would not go out? For example, if I walked out and saw that my window was broken, that, I mean technically it's not an emergency. If I wanted to file a report, do I go down to the police department or does a police officer come to my home? And is that included in this number?
It would be included in the response time if we had an officer go out. We also have a community service officer that goes out, that's a non-s sworn position in our organization, we have one of those. We also are training two new police cadets that are interns that are paid and they will go out to those types of calls.
Are they on call 24 hours a day?
No, they're just going to be there during the day because we find, most people find their crimes during the day. And they have other duties too that we have them doing during the day. And we hope to go online pretty soon with an online reporting system. You all had approved that at the last budget, but the state is going through a process where they're changing over how we report crime to them and we didn't want to kind of get the computers crazy when we switch things around after we got something started, if that makes sense.
Chief, one quick question.
Yes.
Over the time, the response time is going slowly up. I know it's only four years here, but if you go for the last 10 years.
Yes, the response times have gone up. We have looked at our BEAT alignment and we have changed the BEAT alignment and we've reduced our call response time in some areas by one second, others in 40, for about 45 seconds or up to about 45 seconds difference. I say we have five officers on each shift and one supervisor, that's what our optimal staffing is, that's what each shift has. It doesn't account for people that are calling in sick or officers that are injured. So most of the time they're running with four officers on a shift. We do have overlaps at certain times of the day. When we have four officers on a shift, we don't staff our South Highway 50 area and that is just somebody has to pick that up. Usually our Area 3 and 4, which kind of goes towards that direction, they pick that up.
Is that the trend in the region and throughout California also? That response times are going up for other cities?
I haven't looked at response times for other cities. So I did ask my crime analyst about that yesterday, she was going to be looking into it, but we don't have any of that data on what other agencies, you know, what their response times are or such. Our officer per thousand ratio is different than most of the agencies around our region. Most agencies are running about 1.2 to 1.4 officers per thousand, we're just below 1 per thousand, probably 0.9 per thousand. And that kind of contributes to our response times, having fewer people out there.
So Chief, when the whole online reporting thing is up and running, like right now when you look at the police log, let's say from March 1st, you'll see one that says, "Sometime between Friday and Sunday, my mountain bike was stolen out of the garage." Presumably that person's only filing a report because they need it for insurance purposes, so that would be able to be done online, right? So now we don't have to have an officer go out and take that, hopefully frees up officers for a little bit more pressing issues.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we're hoping so. The officers, if somebody wants an officer to go out, of course they'll go out, but we think that some of our calls will be handled just online.
I'm hoping that that turns out to be the case, but I think, Rosario, you might actually be referring to some of the things that I've seen online where people just want to whine and their car got broken into, you know, in some cases they didn't lock it, you know, whatever the reason was, and they demand that somebody come out there immediately, you know, dust for fingerprints and that they're somehow going to find the person who broke into their car when it's probably a, you know, 17-year-old thug that isn't in the system anyway.
Right. And we don't put a lot of our information online.
And you guys are getting bad, people are claiming that Folsom PD refuses to respond to calls and I know that's not true.
We don't refuse to respond to calls, we'll go to anybody's call. We don't put all of our calls online, we just put some of those calls online that have no leads and generated some type of report. The majority of our calls are not reported to the, the media.
Thank you. Is that, is that it, Chief Hillman?
I have one more, which is our overtime.
All right.
And this was something that we looked into, again, you had asked about our overtime at some point. So our overtime budget is around $510,000 for fiscal year '21, '22 and we've spent so far around $810,000, which is a lot of money. 474 of that is reimbursable though, either through grants from the officers of traffic safety, some other grants, and our responses to mutual aid with the Dixie Fire and Caldor Fire. So if you have any questions about this, our minimum staffing.
So Rick, if you add the, if you add the reimbursable overtime, if you put that back into the equation, does that get us closer to the budgeted overtime?
Yeah, we're at about $336,000 right now of our $510,000.
Okay.
That helps public, you know, thank you for saying that because it's not that we are spending over than budgeted.
Right, we are spending the money and until we get reimbursed, it's coming out of our pockets for that, but we're being good neighbors and, you know, responding to these mutual aid calls.
And Chief, the 10 positions that are baked in, are you still looking at transfers from, or what do you call it, lateral? Is that what you call them?
Yeah, lateral officers are those that are, have experience. Why we look for those is that we want an agency that's not all young and have, we want some with experience. A lateral officer is going to have experience and we can usually bring them on, it takes about six months to go through the hiring process, but then only about a month to do, three weeks to a month to do their training, basically acclimate them to Folsom. Whereas a new recruit is going to be about six months worth of training, so we're down a body for a year. And that doesn't include the, the academy time. So we've been fortunate, we'll drop that number by two next week when we hire an officer from Daly City and another from San Francisco and at the end of the month, we'll lose an officer too. So it's kind of a going up and down thing, but we're doing our best.
So those are the opposite, so we're hiring the people, the relatives of the people that just moved to Contra Costa and Oakland in the fireside?
Yes.
Because we're looking, so apparently these guys are coming from the Bay Area because they're looking for a little bit slower pace at work.
Better quality of life all the way around where they, and this is what we're doing to promote our community, is that we don't just talk about our police department, our salary and our benefits. What we talk about is our community and why you would want to work in Folsom, where during the Santa Project, we go out there and we introduce ourselves to our community and that doesn't happen in Oakland.
Do you guys always lead with the Santa Project?
I always do. It's a good thing.
With the what?
It's one of the best.
Santa sleigh.
Our Santa sleigh project. Because it's a time where we go out there with our families and we meet the people that we protect. You ask the officer that came from Oakland if he would do that? No. The ones from San Francisco? No, they laughed at me.
Nobody's handing out corn dogs at the, at the Griswold House at Christmas.
Right. So we promote though our parks and our trails and the closeness to the mountains and also to the ocean when we bring people in from all over. We're actually doing a big campaign right now in Southern California to try to get recruits from there.
Come to work in Folsom where it won't take you three hours to go eight miles.
Yes.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. So that concludes the, kind of the report back and wrap-up of the financial portion of the conversation and I just wanted to do a check-in with the council before we continued. Is there anything you have not heard so far on the financial side as we look ahead to this anticipated budget shortfall that you're like, I need to, you know, I'm not seeing this, I need a question answered?
I would like to see, and only because I looked at it last year and I remember that it just seemed, you know, on my end, it just seemed a little excessive. It was the, on the HR side, it was the vehicle compensation and the technology compensation and I remember seeing numbers of $500 to $700 a month compensation. And I, I just want to see it just for the sake of transparency. What was the other one? The other one was, I guess that's, that's it right now.
Okay, yeah, we can provide a range of the, the vehicle and the tech allowances, kind of what's the low and what's the high.
So I think we need not only what's the low and what's the high, but what is the total number of people, so that you're basically looking at what is the annual cost?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe for 2021.
Yeah, no problem.
And then on, so the cheaper police and cheaper fire, they get a vehicle, do they not get a vehicle allowance then? Or do they get a vehicle allowance?
I don't believe they get a vehicle allowance, but I'm not remembering, I'll have to double-check their contracts, I apologize. Steve, do you, they're not, they don't have auto allowance, that's right.
They just get the vehicle then?
Okay, yeah.
No, they get either a big red truck or a big black vehicle.
Yeah. Okay, and any other, you know, questions on the financial side, anything else we can provide? Okay. All right, so with that, I'm going to transition to a couple of strategic planning exercises that are designed to help us move toward our goal of creating a strategic plan to frame our next five years. And to get us started, if you could go back one slide, Stacy. I found this quote from the American author and jurist Oliver Wendell Holmes Jr. and I found it very compelling. "Greatness is not in where we stand, but in what direction we are moving. We must sail sometimes with the wind and sometimes against it, but sail we must and not drift nor lie at anchor." I have to say, it's been a very hard two-plus years for the city organization, it has not been smooth sailing. We could have all used like intravenous Dramamine honestly at times and we have been besieged by unprecedented storms out there on the ocean. But I am indebted to our employee crew for bringing us safely through. That said, what Mr. Holmes' wise words are really about and what they really address is the importance of strategic planning, the importance of intentionally seeking to plot our future journey, our future successes for an already great city, the importance of not remaining stagnant as we pull ourselves out of the emergency conditions we've been under. Ideally, a strategic plan should serve as a roadmap to advance the vision for the city and ensure that we're poised to capitalize on opportunities. So where are we headed? Where are we driving to or sailing? You know, I'm mixing metaphors, but you know, driving to, sailing to, and if we don't put a pin on our destinations and plot a very thorough map and itinerary for today, we may never reach the desirable and special destinations that are really worthy of a city like Folsom tomorrow. The city of Folsom strives to deliver outstanding service in all of our day-to-day services. I'm so proud of the hundreds of city employees who help us deliver public safety, parks, water, library, recreation, human resources, financial, legal, you know, and other services every single day. These same dedicated employees, many of them also focus on many things that are above and beyond the day-to-day, the things that help build a great city and provide an excellent quality of life to our citizens. That said, since we have finite and limited financial and staff resources to do our work, a strategic plan becomes very important in framing that above and beyond. We want to be intentional about what we're doing around here. We don't want to, within reason, to be doing a bunch of one-offs and that's meant to, not meant to be an insult to anyone, but it's like what, you know, Sarah might want to do or, you know, Rosario might want to do or what a community member want to do, you know, we seek to please, but if we're running around doing all these things, again, we may not be cohesively reaching where we want to go. We want to move forward in concert and cooperation with the city council and our community and stakeholders and our employees with purpose, reason, and cohesiveness. A strategic plan guides our decisions about how we spend our precious time and dollars and I think you're hearing very, very precious dollars. And it also ensures that and I think you're hearing very, very precious dollars, and it also ensures that we are all operating on the same page, and writing that figurative page starts today with input from each one of you. For Folsom, I'm recommending a strategic plan that establishes the city's priorities, goals, and objectives for the next five years. I am seeking a strategic plan that sets a clear priority agenda, a clear policy agenda. I'm seeking a strategic plan that enables us to be able to know with certainty if we've reached a goal, and if not, why not, and how far away are we in terms of reaching the goal, and what types of resources do we need to be able to check that proverbial box. I'm seeking a strategic plan that is a living document with progress on the plan reported to the council regularly. I strongly believe that the achievements from this plan will be enjoyed not only by current residents, but future residents in generations to come, and one day, they're going to thank us all for all this hard work. I think that's the hope. So just as a refresher, the city does actually have, I mean, I think, I think all of you have been through strategic planning, you know, processes of some form or another, and you often hear about, you know, vision, mission, you know, that kind of thing. The city actually does have an existing vision statement and a mission statement, and the city's vision statement is, "The City of Folsom strives to be a role model and regional leader that blends its rich historical roots and diverse recreational and business resources into a great community." The mission statement of the City of Folsom is, "The City of Folsom will provide a safe, healthy, and vibrant community through innovative, responsive, and effective delivery of public services to maintain and enhance the quality of life of our residents." During my time as city manager, we brought you a long-overdue updated general plan, which the council approved in August of 2018. This was a result of an extensive degree of community outreach and input. The General Plan 2035 was heard at at least thirteen public hearings, and information was shared constantly through our various communications platforms throughout the process, and the resulting adopted General Plan 2035 also included a vision statement. And I'm going to put that up there, but I, for the general plan vision statement, but I won't read it for sake of brevity, I'll just give you a moment to read through what the general plan vision statement is. All right, so as part of the General Plan 2035 process, we also brought you nineteen guiding principles. They are listed here, and I'll just run through the slides quickly. They're all pretty much embedded in that vision statement that you just read, but guiding principle number one is maintain a close-knit, neighborly, family-friendly city with a small-town feel. Number two, focus on historic Folsom's commercial district as a center of shopping, dining, and cultural attractions. Three, promote town centers as social gathering places. Four, promote the revitalization of aging commercial corridors. Five, support the regional retail base. Six, enhance gateways into Folsom. Seven, continue to be a premier recreation destination in Northern California. Eight, brand Folsom as the gateway to the Foothill Wine Region. Nine, provide all residents with opportunities to live an active, healthy, and green lifestyle. Ten, provide for a range of attractive and viable transportation options such as bicycling, walking, rail, and end transit. Eleven, provide a range of housing choices for all generations. Twelve, preserve the high quality of Folsom's neighborhoods. Thirteen, foster economic growth and diversity to become recognized as one of the smartest cities in the region. And then fourteen, commit to the high quality, high-quality design. Fifteen, foster a sustainable community for the next generation's benefit. Sixteen, integrate the old and the new areas of the city. Embrace, seventeen, embrace Folsom's heritage. Eighteen, celebrate Folsom's cultural diversity. And nineteen, encourage citizen participation and good leadership. So using all of that as a background and context and taking a little liberty here, if I could, I think we could likely logically infer from the city's vision and mission statement and the General Plan 2035 vision and guiding principles that you, that not necessarily each of you, but the city council adopted. You know, I kind of tried to, like, bring that together, what do we generally seem to value? Financial stability and sustainability. It's foster fiscal health through disciplined, long-term planning, cost control, heightened efficiency, increased revenue, and cost recovery. Governance and organization effectiveness, you know, you see themes through all those things, produce high-quality services to the community through a commitment to local government best practices and employee development, support, and retention. Three, economic and community development. Institute forward-thinking, business retention and development, tourism, land use development, revitalization, housing, and other strategies that ignite economic and community growth, innovation, and quality of life. Public safety, ensure that Folsom's residents, businesses, and visitors enjoy a safe and secure community. Infrastructure, maintain and improve the city's physical and technological infrastructure. And then communication, there's a word missing there on the slide, but inclusivity and outreach, build strong connections with regional partners, community stakeholders, businesses, residents, and employees. So, you know, I mean, first of all, do you think I'm missing anything there? You know, is, are you kind of, are you hearing this and you're kind of like, gosh, there's just a piece that's just totally missing, or that seems off at this point, just in kind of a general sense?
I think the starting point for strategic planning, we are, I think it's hitting the target.
Okay, perfect.
I think looking at the mission, the vision, and the General Plan 2035 is great, and like I told you over the phone, girl, you are speaking my love language, because, you know, for me, as a new council member in 2021, as we made decisions, to me, it was, well, what are we bouncing it up against? What are we bouncing it up against? So we vote on things, things come before us, the staff will ask for direction, and we either say yes or no, but there's no explanation as to what that yes or no is, and so for me, this gives me clarity on where we're headed down for the next five years, so I think this is a great start, Elaine.
Thank you, that's certainly the goal. Anyone else kind of would just, I mean, I'm really just talking about those kind of statements, and this list here is just, you know, anything that you'd else like to, okay. So these are all very reasonable overarching statements, I think we could all be like, yeah, that sounds fine, that sounds nice, but I think we really need to put some meat to the bone, and that's a weird thing for a vegetarian to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. So I think I've heard from most of you that you're most, you're not particularly interested in the amorphous and the fluffy, you don't, you don't want to dwell in the let's-be-wonderful land, you know?
Yeah, don't want to, we're not here to talk about unicorns.
Okay, yeah, so I'm not hearing that you want to talk about unicorns, and in fact, I have been told, you know, like, just don't go there, like, we're not, we really want to get, you know, get down to it. So I think what you're looking to is to get to a sense of SMART goals and objectives as part of your strategic planning. And by way of SMART, I mean, and, you know, it's an acronym, and it means, you know, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. And so once you've set the big-picture vision for us, we, as your staff, your executive team, can start taking deliberate, intentional, SMART steps depending on available resources each year to get there. I mean, that's the idea. So I would appreciate it if you could do some foundational work today along those lines, and I really want to receive your input through two exercises that I sent to you about a week ago, and they're included in the council packet. And the first one is, and it's, you know, I just called it "In the Next Five Years" worksheet, and as you'll see in the staff report, we asked you, as the city council, to provide up to five answers to the following question. What would you like the City of Folsom organization to achieve/accomplish in the next five years? And in the workshop, in the worksheet that we provided the council, I wrote, "Please consider this an opportunity to craft statements that reflect your hopes and ambitions for what you desire to be true about the City of Folsom in 2027, and the more specific your statements are, the better." And I said, if you don't have five statements, one is fine, two is fine, three is fine, four is fine, five is not any magic number, it's just that was the starting point. I said to please strive to look above and beyond the status quo, because we're not talking about the status quo, please strive to strike a balance between being bold and being realistic, and then I said, "This process will help inform the City of Folsom's strategic plan, which will in turn inform the city's goals and correlating milestones and timelines based on available resources." So if I could, and Ms. Rayner has, was voluntold, volunteered, thank you, Christine, I appreciate your willingness to help, I would love to hear from each of you at this time as to how you would answer that question, and Christine's going to serve as our scribe and do her best. Don't get too worried, she's going to be typing in kind of generally what she heard, but obviously, we are on TV, this is on the web, we will go back and very thoroughly fill in the blanks. And Councilmember Kozlowski is not here today, but he did actually provide me with his answers to this question, so after you all have shared your input, I'd be happy to read his into the record as well. So Mayor, I'll just turn it over to you as how you would, you know, how you want to go down the line in terms of answering the question.
Did everybody provide you with a copy? That one I did, oh.
Oh, I have yours, if you would like me to read yours, Carrie.
Am I the only one that actually gave it to you?
Ahead of time, before today, yes, so we were just going to say them out loud.
I have mine.
Yeah. So.
All right, because I was feeling bad because I didn't give you the other one, but now I don't feel bad at all.
I completely intended for everyone to just real-time, like, that's part of the conversation, like, I wasn't looking, like, give me your homework, and then I'm going to, like, check, you know, so it's, today is the time to discuss it. Carrie, I do have yours if you want to.
Okay, we'll start, let's just start with Rosaria, because I'm going to go to the rest room.
I have nineteen, but I'll give you five.
Right, okay.
The first, yeah, the first one is, create a master plan process for the River District. Create a master plan process for the Corp Yard. Specific plan and needed infrastructure for the Central Business District. Review all services and determine profitability, basically identify services that operate at a deficit. And I have two more. Enhance. Enhance effort at economic development and attract good businesses, which kind of even goes into what we were talking about earlier, about which ones would give us, you know, a strong tax, taxing. And then there's one more. Sustain a vibrant historic district because so many people are drawn to this area of our city.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez. Does that generally capture your thoughts? Of course, we'll go.
Well, there are fourteen others, but I'll let everybody else talk, and then I'll add one if there's one that's really.
Okay, yeah, and you're free to share your fourteen, I know there's no, you know. Okay, so. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Chalantela, thank you.
Awesome. Two of them Rosario is covering, so that's easy. The two Rosario is covering from my five, because we are doing independently. Central District's revitalization, that's one, and Corp Yard. But my thought is, while developing the strategy for Corp Yard development, take residents' inputs heavily, that's an extra.
So to be clear, on these items, you're looking at a master plan. In five years, you want to be able to say a master plan has been developed, not necessarily executed.
Yeah. Yeah, while developing, you know, it's important to take the residents' inputs, that's the only.
Got it, yes, okay.
Good. My third one, it's not the third one, my first one, I put it here, is, "City to focus more on our public safety." That's my first one in my list. We are doing great, but there is quite a bit of room for improvement. I'm just reading, you know, when we walk around and see it, I see quite a few people, you know, moving into the Folsom, and I ask casually, "Why do you pick, why did you pick Folsom?" First thing comes, the safest city, to the great schools, to the great parks, to the trails, to, so I hear that more, and I want to make sure when the, when the response times are going and we are, you know, pressurized under staff for public safety, I really want to focus on that next five years. I'm giving a little bit description, Elaine, so I just want to make sure the purpose why I'm picking that. The next one is, "Public-private partnership." I know probably we may be doing it, but we have to have a strategy and focused approach. You can simply say, "A public-private partnership," that's good enough, you don't have to capture, right? That's easy. I'm so sorry to say, but I'm just giving, you know, where I am going with, you know, emphasizing that one. And the next one is, "Economic development." Very specific to, besides all our economic development and a team is doing in partnership with Christine, you, and our Joe, and all those, more aggressive on our strategy, more aggressive on our strategy to attract technology, health firms to Folsom. We have to create some niche to Folsom. So that's my fifth one. I think I covered my five.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Chalantela, appreciate that. Let's see, Mayor, where would you like to go from here?
Sarah, did you give yours yet?
Yeah, Christine, I apologize, this is going to be difficult, because I kind of crafted mine, it said about, reflect your hopes and ambitions for what you desire to be true about the City of Folsom in 2027, so I kind of made mine in a statement form, so.
Yeah, I think I did your, I did the same thing you did.
So first one, "In 2027, we will have greatly reduced the likelihood of a catastrophic fire in Folsom because of our proactive approach to ladder fuel reduction, the protection of open space, and emergency preparedness drills with the public and staff." Second one, "In 2027, we will have a vision and long-term plan in place for the revitalization and development of Folsom Boulevard and the Central Business District, and will be chipping away at projects as the budget allows. There is a strong emphasis on walkability, bike lanes, mixed-use development, and outdoor spaces for eating and gathering." The third one, "In 2027, roundabouts are now our preferred traffic calming device over stop signs and traffic signals after sending our Public Works Director and Traffic Engineers to Carmel, Indiana on a fact-finding mission. The number of fatal collisions has decreased as a result."
That's not the city I want to live in, but go on.
Number four, "In 2027, our police and fire departments are adequately staffed, and we continue to attract new recruits as well as lateral hires. The council continues to actively support legislation and ballot measures that restore law and order statewide and reinstate appropriate consequences for criminal behavior." And then this, my economic development one is pretty long. "In 2027, our economic development and tourism efforts will be primarily focused on enhancing the assets that are already unique to Folsom, including our proximity to Lake Natoma and Folsom Lake, our railroad history, Johnny Cash and Folsom Prison, our extensive bike trails, and large cycling community, and Folsom Lake College and the Harris Center for the Arts. So specifically, in 2027, a majority of the art installation will have been completed on the Johnny Cash Trail. We will have an ale trail providing a connection between breweries, pubs, et cetera, along Folsom Boulevard and the Historic District. We will continue to extend the trails, increase connections between trails, and add helpful signage. Note, as someone who is directionally challenged, a sign telling me I'm on the Humbug Willow Creek Trail means nothing to me. In 2027, in cooperation with the Folsom Historical Society, FHDA, and the Greater Folsom Partnership and others, we will have created self-guided walking, bicycling, and kayaking canoe tours that include the history of Negro Bar, Folsom Powerhouse, Folsom Prison, Pioneer Village, the Railroad Block, et cetera. We will have a River District master plan and are working closely with state parks to implement, starting with a boathouse. We will have a long-term vision for the Y property that honors Folsom's railroad history and supports the activities of the PSVRR, and we will be working with Folsom Lake College to build student housing to create a college district between Lakeside Church and Palladio."
Great, thank you.
Elaine has a copy, you can just give it over.
Yeah, and anybody who has this document, if you just want to email it to me, we're happy to, you know, take your words, word for word. And Mayor, if I could read Mike's now, would that work?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kozlowski was not able to be here due to a work obligation, but he submitted, and he emphasized that there was no specific priority to any of these, it was just his five. One is that the average tenure of officers in our police department leans toward experience rather than not. A city budget that allows for maintaining a 20% or greater reserve fund. Three, significant progress toward a new flexible indoor slash outdoor arena slash event center complex being located in Folsom.
I knew he was going to go in that whole rodeo arena thing.
To supplement the rodeo arena, high school stadium, the Andy Moore and Folsom Sports Complex, and the community center. Number four, Greater Folsom partnership with California State Parks to help move plans for River District improvements forward that suit our city ambitions and, State Parks, he underscored, and State Parks Department plans. Five, a calendar of events that includes and integrates the Folsom Plan area and and its residents into citywide events. So that is Councilmember Kozlowski's list. And then, Mayor, did you want to share yours?
Well, I'll just, I'll just tack on to Mike's last comment that I'd like for the, in 2027, for the Folsom Plan Area to have long since stopped being called the Folsom Plan Area and just be Folsom. But on my list, I've got, again, I kind of went in the same direction that Sarah did in that I'm assuming that we're having this conversation five years from now. So I'd like to be able to say five years from now, the City of Folsom is still one of the safest places to live in California. The City of Folsom is financially stable with adequate reserves, minimum 15% in the general fund. The City of Folsom is one of the top-rated places in California and the United States to live, work and recreate. The City of Folsom has a wonderful historic, that, wonderful historic district that attracts both residents and tourists alike. And the City of Folsom has an amazing river district that encourages water sports, trail activities, dining, camping and whatever else we believe needs to be included in that river district that we keep talking about.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Can I? Okay, great. The El Dorado Trail to Plasterville that creates a sixty-mile bike ride, which would be great for tourism, be a destination for both businesses.
Talking about along the railroad alignment.
Yeah, yeah. But be a destination for both businesses and leisure travel. Celebrate our history and highlight our past. Sustain being known as the best place to raise a family. And then the last one was be known as a region for strong arts and culture, which again is an economic driver. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chalantela.
Yeah, since I have a photo, let's there, let's go with the make it five. In fact, corp yard and, you know, those are two, but don't worry. Fifth one is strategically invest in technology to improve services to residents.
Great.
Technology innovations with the police and other departments as well. That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you all. And I did conduct this exercise with our executive management team, which was also interesting. I don't know if you want to hear some, a bit of, okay, so I, you know, I have those remarks. I mean, you know, this was every, you know, some people feeding in. It doesn't necessarily reflect everyone's views, but, you know, just to give you a flavor. Identify a consistent predictable, and this is in five years. We've identified a consistent predictable additional revenue stream. We're not keeping up. Achieve a top rating by S and P Standard and Poor's for excellent financial resources. Create an employee hiring plan that keeps pace with city council expectations. Restore a sense of community in a post-pandemic world. Create recreational community and other activities, events, approaches designed to help bring people back together. Bring back the importance of workplace of choice. We, we have, is that we have employees who want to come and that they want to stay. Focus more on equity inclusion in the workplace. Celebrate our community's diversity and involve the Chamber of Commerce in that. Implement an intentional plan so that Folsom emerges as an innovation leader in the region. Innovate on all levels. Implement strategic partnerships that help enhance our amenities, you know, regional sports complex, town centers, parks, et cetera. Create and nurture a culture that is supportive of staff delivering extraordinary services. Provide collaborative opportunities to ask our employees what they think. Complete an iconic project in the city like a tree walk or a children's museum or that kind of thing. Identify use for the existing corp yard. You're going to hear a lot of the same themes here. You can guess where these came from and I am not going to provide background detail. Use remediated groundwater from Aerojet in plan area for non-potable uses. Complete alternative water supply redundancy project. And Chief Hillman, thank you for those. Encourage community collaboration where everyone offers something instead of all fingers. And I'm not meaning it in, you know, but instead of like, city, you know, it's like, okay, everyone, let's, let's, let's work on these problems.
Did this same staff member request significant numbers of cornhole events?
Honor our.
Because he would be the father of the cornhole champions?
And I'm sorry, I realized the limit was five, but, you know, we have a very, we had a large group and so I'm trying to respect everybody's point of view here. Honor our distinctive by nature commitment in economic development and programming. Incorporate our rivers and our lakes in our programming and our events. Consider an ale trail, you know, that, that's come up. Minimize our carbon footprint through fleet electrification, solar energy. Dedicate resource.
The Vice President this morning just announced that there's, I don't remember the total, it might be a billion dollars or something for electric vehicles.
Well, we would, we would love just a sliver of that. Dedicate resources to our adjacent wine region, you know, through assistance and partnerships with the college for training and job opportunities. Provide direct human customer service connection in our departments during business hours. Offer hybrid working relationships for all employees whose jobs allow. Establish and rotate an assistant director positions in each department to provide succession planning. Eliminate the current unmet park needs list. Establish an annual IT fund to keep up with technology needs. Augment annual facilities and vehicle funds, annual, you know, our annual fund. Implement a historic district parking management plan that includes enforcement, a surface lot and a shuttle system. Commit to a one-city feeling and leadership despite districting with the strategic plan providing clear direction for that. Keep the reserve at at least minimum 15%. Definitely hearing that theme. Fire Station Thirty-Four built and staffed. Woo, we'll see, hopefully. Police Department remodeled and expanded. Modern, modern community slash conference center built. And I'm not talking about what's next door, you know, lovely facility. We're talking about something really much more contemporary and cutting-edge.
Adjacent to Mike's new rodeo arena.
And a modern indoor sports slash event center built. That we are pandemic-ready. We are the workplace of choice among municipalities in the region in terms of attraction and retention of employees. Our Central Business District revitalization is underway. We've attracted at least one major online sales distribution center. And this is, you'll, we'll hearken back to this when we talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, but I would like to form a manager supervisor development program. So one of the, what I had on my list was the graduates of our established manager supervisor development program are moving into leadership positions in five years. That like they are, they have risen up and there they are leading the city. And finally, city hall, community center and other employee work sites are remodeled slash renovated for public and employee benefit because they're all looking a little tired, you know, so they need, they need some updates. So I didn't mean to take time so much with us, but I wanted you to hear from, from our team. So looking at, you know, what, or, you know, you, you heard, you're from your colleagues, you heard from your city manager and your executive management team. Is there anything up there that, you know, I just want to start, is like a non-starter that you just don't feel, that you, you feel like you really need to voice? Like, I just don't think that that's on my list for five years. I don't think that's realistic. I don't really want you spending a lot of time on that. Is there anything that you would want to remove for any reason or a theme you're uncomfortable with? Anything like that?
The only thing I would question in this, this is, I think, on YK's list. We, right now, I know there, there has always been a significant focus on retaining the tech startups, many, because we have a lot of them in Folsom already, many of which kind of started off as, as employee spinoffs from people that had worked at one time at Intel. And right now, we know that we've got Dignity doing an expansion. UC Davis doing an extent, an expansion of their facilities on the, on the healthcare front. And, you know, I actually got a call from somebody that's running for Congress. It also happens to be a doctor who also happens to work part-time for Kaiser. And I said, hey, get my endorsement if you can get Kaiser to make a commitment to build a hospital in Folsom. So.
Which of those things of YK's are you referring to?
No, Y, no, YK was talking about attracting technology and healthcare.
No, didn't he say invest in technology?
No, he said both, actually.
I probably missed in my detailed expanded statement. There is a qualifier from Bay Area. People are, techno, firms are leaving left and right from Bay Area to Texas, Oregon, Idaho. Rather they leave somewhere, can we at least focus the approach on the Intel subcontractor firms who are leaving, Micron subcontractor firms who are. I have a more explanation, long sentence, but I gave a small one there. So it is more detailed, not.
Okay, and, and although I agree with everything that you're saying, the, the problem is that these companies are, they're not necessarily leaving Folsom and they're not necessarily even in the Bay Area, they're leaving California.
That's true. I mean, again, rather they live Bay Area for higher cost and, and, and not available resources, can we grab them to our corridor of Sacramento region?
And I believe, I believe that there's already been, there's significant amount of effort that goes into, you know, doing that. I'm, I'm only saying that we're, we're working on that now.
Well, that's, that's why, again, I just want to say one thing. It's a focused, that's all. I, I, I put it that focused because I rather generically go to the Bay Area and talk, specify those half a dozen subcontractors who is in their mind thinking to leave for Intel or Micron subcontractors. That's the focus I'm seeing.
I understand, okay. Any, any, are, you're all, I mean, is there kind of a consensus that?
I don't have anything up there that's a, that's a total non-starter for me. The question is prioritizing things and how are we going to pay for any of it?
Right, so we're going to come back to that, but I want to kind of continue if we could.
And I have no problem with that. I am going to ask, though, that I'd like to find a way for us to finish by about four so that we're not in this room.
I don't think there's any problem finishing by four.
Okay.
I will finish by four, Mayor.
No, and I only say that because we're all going to be back here at five thirty, so.
I, I want to be very respectful of your time, so.
Elaine, are you going to talk about how we are including the residence part?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
But I got to get talking because the mayor's going to pull me to this four o'clock. So let me, let me finish up my remarks here. So, so our second exercise for the afternoon is, is a SWOT analysis. And in order to build an effective strategic plan in Folsom, it's important to evaluate the current status of our organization. An important tool in doing that is to analyze our city's organization and that's through an exercise called a SWOT analysis. And that comes from strengths, S, weaknesses, W, opportunities, O, threats, T, SWOT. I do want to note that the city is an organization. We probably have little to no control over many opportunities and threats, but we still, it's really important to consider and confront them just the same. So I asked you each to think about each of those categories. So at this point, I'd like to move through each of those categories and, and get input from each of you and I'll read Councilmember Kozlowski's as before. The first one is strengths. Christine will again be our scribe. And I, you know, on the worksheet I gave you, I just gave you some guiding questions, but it doesn't have to be these things. I said strengths, what are the City of Folsom's advantages? What does the City of Folsom do well? So Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to as to how you would like to make the way, your way through your colleagues.
Let's, let's put Mikes up there since we have those done.
Okay, so Mike listed the strengths as professional and experienced police officers and firefighters. Extraordinarily capable residents across all professional disciplines. Sound financial planning. Superb local schools, K through twelve and community college. Relative affluence. Strong base of service clubs. And that's all for Councilmember Kozlowski in that category.
Okay, Sarah?
For strengths, I have, we have a reputation for being a clean, safe, family-friendly community. We have big city amenities with a small-town feel. Outstanding, outstanding city staff who continue to do more with less and engaged generous residents. For weaknesses, I just put one and that is a tendency to rest on our laurels. Opportunities, we have two things other cities can't buy or create or develop and that is two lakes and a unique history.
Are we just on strengths or are we?
No, she's giving her whole thing.
Oh.
Just strengths, just strengths.
Oh, just strengths. Oh, 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 sorry, okay.
Okay, next for strengths?
Rosaria?
For strengths, I have that we have a good public-private partnership with the Chamber of Bedcorp and the city. We have a strong sense of community. We have historical roots. We are known for having excellent trails, parks and other such amenities. We are known for having a great police and fire departments. People feel safe. We have, we attract high socioeconomic families that want to live in Folsom, which also creates an opportunity for affordable housing, but we attract high socioeconomic families. We are a highly desired place to buy and, to buy a home and raise a family. Strong home values. We have a diverse city. And we have opportunities for growth with the Folsom Plan Area.
Great.
YK?
We can repeat, right?
Of course, yep, that helps amplify, yeah, absolutely.
But you can kind of do it in, you can kind of do it in ditto.
In ditto?
Because, because I'm actually just going to add to things that are not already on the list.
Okay, I think the one is schools, maybe you can just simply say because we have a top, great schools here and public safety is one in my list and the great parks and trails. Parks and trails. The one is, which is not there in my colleague's list, is the Folsom sweet spot location between the two rivers and a beautiful place to develop. The other one, I think it is up there. Our residence, that's my first one, in fact, residence. More or less, everybody has the giving back to community mindset. Residence is our strength.
Okay, Mayor?
Okay, we have a very, very vibrant and involved business community. And by that, I mean, not only the business is successful, but they, they give back to the community with regard to community events, sponsorships, that sort of thing. And I believe that many of the employees of the businesses that are located in Folsom actually live here. We have a great base of volunteers with our residents. Community Service Day being the, a really good example. Where else do you get twenty-five-hundred people in the middle of a pandemic that can't wait to go out and do stuff to benefit the entire community and other families, not their own? Great public safety and I think for a number of reasons, that attracts employees who want to live here. And because employees want to live here, that attracts businesses that would like to relocate here because their employees want to live here. We have great amenities and I just hope that we can continue to maintain them.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And then just briefly, our executive management team, strengths identified where we have, and Christine obviously don't scribe all these because I have these city employees who go to great lengths to, to respond to community needs. Strong city employee connections slash identification with the Folsom community, community pride out there among residents. Ability to come together in a crisis quickly and efficiently. We were the first jurisdiction to figure out a lot of key pandemic elements. Longstanding, successful partnerships with Folsom Cordova, Chamber of Commerce, the business community, Folsom Lake College, et cetera. Strong regional working relationships, partnerships and networks. Fiscally responsible. Abundance of programs and services, ability and willingness to maximize services offerings and programs in our community despite significant financial facilities slash resources constraints. An engaged community who are proud to live here and eager to give back and a reputation, and our reputation in the region is really strong. So that's the executive management team.
Elaine, I know I missed the one biggest one at the top. Can I put one quickly? I'll make it fast. My first one is full-service city, first one. I want to go before staff. Full-service city, awesome staff in every department. That, that's the beauty on that one, including parks.
Full-service city.
Full-service city.
Yeah.
Did I say?
Okay, so.
Awesome staff, library, everyone, thank you.
Thank you for that and we'll obviously review the video of this, make sure we've got it all. And then we'll move on to strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. Next. Oh, sorry, we need to do weaknesses, yes, just weaken away that was just, okay.
You get Mikes?
Weaknesses, I will read Mikes first and he said, community center usefulness and size for our growing city.
It's all about that new arena for Mike.
Very small voice in statewide policy development that affects us dramatically. Lack of affordable housing, I mean literally affordable to the average person with a good job. Modest climate action plans. Underutilized street bike lanes. And lack of plans for the future of multimodal transportation. So those are Councilmember Kozlowski's weaknesses, not his personally, but.
I only put one and that was a tendency to rest on our laurels.
That's a good. That's a good one. Okay, thank you. Sarah, all right?
Rosario?
For me, weaknesses is, one of them is affordable housing. We have, we, I mentioned that we have a high socioeconomic families that live here, but with that, it creates a lack of affordable housing. We have an opportunity to develop leadership, both from the city and from the council. Oftentimes, we appear timid and bureaucratic. We, I think one of the weaknesses is that we have a council that needs to improve giving direction to staff, and also staff that needs to ask this council for direction on items. Staff, it often appears that staff is not moving forward with projects. We need to be more proactive on the problem-solving. No annual progress or on legacy projects. And then, one that, the lax ability to get around without a car in Folsom. I think we, maybe it's transportation, falls under transportation, so you have to have a car, and so it creates sort of an opportunity.
Good.
Councilmember Tom Charla?
Yeah, I'm going to go. I want to make sure Christine is following her fingers.
I don't want you all to worry too much about that.
Is that right? Okay.
Because we are, we are going to capture, I don't want to, that's going to take more time, so it's okay.
Got it. Mine is improvements to procurement process throughout all departments, because almost one-third of our funding is going through the procurements. There is room for improvement. And a second one is a very focused approach on grants finding and grabbing the grants for the all departments. Should be a little bit centralized to get that grants to under control, because Fed, states, they have so many grants in so many places. A focused person. Thanks. We don't have it right now in my mind.
YK, could you expand a little bit on the, your commentary about procurement?
Procurement process?
What's your, what do you think is wrong?
The wrong is if we have a four, yes, I'm going to give a number here, right? If we have X number of vendors are proposing the responses, and we verify and validate their strengths, experience, and all those, sometimes the number comes, vendor A, 90 points, vendor B, 88 points. We award right away to vendor A because it is 90 points, not 88. My process improvement is there are two more steps are missing at large. Interviewing those top vendors and opening up the price and taking the price into consideration, and total it and present the best value to the vendor. Sometimes vendor B, who scored 88 points, only two points less, may have a much lesser price than vendor.
So you're talking about changing the process for professional services?
Enhancing the process, yeah.
No, it's a very specific question. Are you talking about wanting to change the process for hiring for professional services?
It's including the two more steps which I recommended on the interview, plus cost opening, cost comparison. Yes.
I kind of want a yes or no answer. Are you talking about this as it affects professional services?
Yes. Again, as I said, for the record purpose, I worked for a public sector, especially state of California. Throughout my career, I was in huge procurements. And one of them, I just want to quote, $1 billion procurement. They have gone through it, and they do have some process improvements. It's not that I'm saying it, you know, I experienced it. I think I want to bring my value to our town to save some money. Thanks.
Okay, Mayor?
It wasn't a criticism. I just want a clarification, that's all. I've been getting, I'm going to kind of agree with, with Sarah. There have been, has been a bit of resting on our laurels because of the long list of accolades that we've gotten, and we just assumed that those were going to continue moving forward. And they don't necessarily, although we did get listed, I got a, somebody forwarded something to me. We just got listed as one of the top 10 places to live in the West.
Yeah, I saw that.
With most of the other locations being in Arizona.
It was kind of a strange little list, but.
Well, it was a strange list, but apparently it was posted originally by somebody that happens to live in Vail, Arizona, that grew up in Folsom.
I saw that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, so with that, I would tend to agree with Sarah. And the only complaint that I've been getting lately, and I'm hoping that this is somewhat pandemic-related, and the fact that not everybody is back sitting at their actual desk inside this building all the time. But I'm getting negative feedback about responsive, being responsive to the residents. That people are calling, they're leaving messages, and no one's ever getting back to them. And I've had quite a few complaints about that in the last six, eight weeks.
Okay.
So I think that's something that we need to work on, and I think that moving forward with this strategic planning is a good thing, and finding a solution moving forward to where we started this meeting with, and that being making sure that our city's finances are going to be stable when we're sitting here two years from now.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor. And then just briefly, the executive management team really led off with, our weaknesses are our current fiscal constraints. They're huge, and they affect everything. No extra additional dependable, reasonable, consistent revenue stream. This means we have no buffer. We have no room for extras. Employee morale, fatigue, divisiveness issues related to lack of resources, sense of disconnectedness that has come in during the pandemic because of the virtual nature of work during that time. Many employees very overwhelmed due to understaffing, concerns about missing things, errors. No clear career paths in many areas because of understaffing. Employees feel stuck. Aging leadership slash retirements means that we're losing or about to lose important institutional knowledge and history. There's a gap in some departments in terms of the next generation not yet being ready to lead. Insufficient resources to provide the IT services, technology, and training our employees deserve and that they need to serve. Generational ideas, and this is what Chief Casano was getting a little bit of, general ideas of what work looks like, the desire for working at home, hybrid work, you know, that kind of thing comes in. Employee, employee attraction, retention because of the combination of these issues, concern that's only going to worsen as the financial situation worsens, polarization of the community over the last few years. Some are very quick to anger and criticism out there, and the city becomes a target, and that's really tough on employees. Aging facilities, the shine is wearing off our facilities, a need for freshening, remodeling, expanding. Politically-driven decisions that preempt pre-existing plans. Lack of resources to fully manage open space to minimize fire disaster, lack of funds to finish planned amenities, not having sufficient staff to provide the kind of customer service we want to provide, depending on voicemail, when we'd rather be answering the phones directly, et cetera. Need to move to emergency plant, need more emergency planning, the next pandemic, possible loss of the power grid, et cetera. Lack of availability of workforce housing, which has already been mentioned as well. Like, a lot of our employees cannot and by any means afford to live here. So that's the, that's the executive management team. Again, not everyone, but what I heard in, you know, from the group. Okay, so O is for opportunities, so we'll move from there. Do you want me to read Mike's first, Mayor? So Mike's opportunities that he listed are regional and state mandates related to energy uses, carbon footprint, and vehicle miles traveled. Good areas for redevelopment within the city core that can add much-needed housing. Excellent areas that can be energized by increasing service to and connections to state parks and Folsom Plan area open spaces. Better multimodal transportation planning, protected bike lanes, small electric vehicle paths, shuttles to reduce parking space hunting. I am not being critical of what we've done. We lead the region generally in, in this area, but plenty more can be done, and we must continue to evolve. And then finally, encourage local service clubs and faith-based communities with citywide membership drive and promotion of service projects and good work. So those are Councilmember Kozlowski's opportunities.
YK?
I might have repeated on my strategy, but one of them I want to keep here as an opportunity. Public-private partnership exploration on that one. And a second one is also very similar, attracting those businesses, especially from Bay Area.
Rosario?
For mine, the opportunities is the River District and the historic district parking management issue.
Sarah?
I just put that we have two things other cities can't buy, create, or develop. That is two lakes and a unique history. We need to focus our efforts and resources there in order to set us apart from other cities in the region.
Awesome. I like that.
Mayor, did you have any opportunities you'd like?
Yeah, it's, I'm kind of with Sarah on the, you know, the River District. I think that's been a very strong theme here today. I think the employees want that, and I think the vast majority of the councilmembers want it. And I think we need to, we need to try to move forward, not necessarily resting on our laurels, but building on the successes that we've already had with technology industries, the fact that we will be having more healthcare providers and partners in the city of Folsom, and expanding on the, the great network of parks and trails that we already have. I think those are all mechanisms by which we attract more businesses to the community as well as their employees.
Thank you. And then the executive management team in terms of opportunities said we have some great blank canvases within our city limit. For example, Folsom Plan area, Corp, Corp Yard, possible future River District for the city to define iconic projects. Community becoming increasingly diverse, an opportunity to foster inclusiveness, educate our community with information and events. Pro-housing designations or other state programs that provide funding sources. Historic district Piladio, Folsom Lake College, Harris Center, Folsom Cordova, Gold Rush history, rail history. This is all part of a great city, and they all present opportunities. Development of a citywide career ladder, development of a manager-supervisor development program, recoup costs of programming services in certain areas. Formalization of engagement with community partners, taking on more leadership roles regionally. Technology solutions, districting, South of 50 integration, and then transformation of vacant office and commercial spaces into housing and/or distribution centers. So that's, that's your executive management team. And then moving on to threats. And I will read Councilmember Kozlowski's. State of California tax structure, the overall burden can distort the value of local tax measures. Unfunded mandates of all sorts from the state and federal government, along with creep in industry standards and building codes. Challenges in recruiting experienced police and firefighters to fill age slash experience gaps in existing staff. Partnership creeping into local, a partisanship creeping into local elections. Misapplication of problem-solving solutions and/or policies for very large cities statewide. Climate change, more specifically persistent drought. Regional and state mandates related to energy use, carbon footprint and vehicle miles traveled, and finally, aging infrastructure and replacement costs.
Did Mike have vehicle miles traveled as both an opportunity and a threat?
Yeah, he may have. There, you know, and there are, there's kind of duality that you see in some of these is that, you know, some are like, this is a threat, but this is an opportunity to make positive change. I noticed the executive management team was doing that as well.
Okay. Rosario?
Okay, for me, it's the surrounding cities, Elk Grove, Rancho, Citrus Heights, Rockland, Roseville are passing up Folsom's high demand. We appear to be complacent.
Could you say that again?
Surrounding cities such as Elk Grove, Rancho, Citrus Heights, Rockland, and Roseville are passing up Folsom's high demand. We appear to be complacent slash passive. COVID impact, working from home capability that impacts travel to work, supporting small businesses, shopping, et cetera, which impacts sales tax. Erosion, degrading infrastructure, very little financial flexibility or none. Technology has impacted travel, supporting hotels and tourism. Cost of living, gas and food prices are impacting productivity, product availability. Big box buildings can potentially not be in high demand. They're either too big or too small. And so what do we do with these type of buildings? And then another threat is 80% of our council has three and a half years of experience or less.
YK?
I'll summarize it into two groups. One is growing budget deficit. We got to address that. It's a threat for us. If we can't take action, then.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
The budget deficit over the years, growing, it's a threat for our city. We got to act on it one way or another. And the second one is the growth in our town. We are going to be, you know, going to 11,600 homes, whatever it is. Services, providing services to those residents. We have to look into it. It's a threat. Growth always brings some, and rather than, so those are the two. Growth and associated service providing and budget deficit.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, we don't have a budget deficit yet. Looks like we're headed in that direction, but we don't have one right now.
Is this for next five years, Elaine, how you're thinking? Yeah, that's what.
Okay. I just, I'm just afraid that somebody's watching this today thinking that we have an unbalanced budget, and we don't yet.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Constrained budget, several department heads and senior staff nearing retirement age, and concern about whether we have the bench to fill those roles, and expanding footprint and the challenges that brings for delivering services, unfunded state mandates, and by district elections, will have an effect on our city exactly how it remains to be seen.
I think Mike already mentioned the drought, and again, I'm just trying to add things that you guys haven't already brought up. So drought, you know, again, unfunded mandates, as Sarah just said, because we never, we never know when the next one's going to come. And on that front, historically, we had been a little bit better at predicting when those things were going to come down the pike, but this whole thing about 400 grand for new property tax system by Sac County, that to me makes no sense. And if we're paying 400 grand, what is this, a, you know, $5 billion software package? That makes no sense. But anyway, so unfunded mandates and unfunded, excuse me, unexpected expenditures, given that we know that we're looking at financial issues that are gonna, if we don't find a way to solve them, are going to be a major problem two years from now.
Thank you. And then just real quickly, the executive management team in terms of threats said the, our very, very constrained fiscal situation affects everything. We, we stand the risk of losing touch with our community by contracting out services. And I think that's getting out that we're turning to more contracting because we can't afford staff. And so then you start losing connect, important connections. Lack of affordable housing, unfunded state and federal mandates, rising pension costs, lack of physical space to support city staffing growth. Other cities may become more appealing to residents, businesses, employees because they have more resources. Pandemic wounds need to heal among employees and also in our community. Declining brick and mortar, mortar retail. Electrification of vehicles means a reduction in gas tax revenue. Getting away from a Folsom Plan area, us versus them, you know, it's one city, but that's a threat. Further pandemics is a threat. Global war and resulting instability, economic and otherwise. Rising costs, supply chain issues, concern that we can't be a workplace of choice because there are few linear, clear, linear career paths. Our compensation package may start to slip. If revenues can't increase, our facilities are slipping, districting, and environmental emergencies like fire, smoke, you know, fill in the blank. So. All right, is there anything else anyone would like to add on, on that SWOT exercise?
Anybody?
Okay, so this has been extraordinarily helpful to me, at least. I hope it's been enlightening to you.
If anything come across, we can pass to you, right? That way you can add it.
Yeah, we will. I will capture everything I heard today. I think if you have a burning point, I would prefer it be said on the dais, you know, because I think having conversations one-offs isn't helpful. I think you all need to buy into this.
Got it.
So as long as you're comfortable, what I'd like to suggest for next steps is that we ask our community some of these same questions, probably not in quite the same way. Like, I'm not going to like have Christine put out a social media post that says, hi, do a SWOT analysis, you know? But like, just trying to get at what the community feels about where we should be in five years and, you know, and, and then what I'd like to do is incorporate that feedback along with what you heard from your executive management team. And just distill that down to you into a set of what I call. team, and distill that down to you into a set of what I call visionary statements that would become a strategic policy agenda. And I'd bring that back to you. We would bring that back to you as an executive management team. And as long as you bless it, you know, we'll try to capture everything we hear, big themes. And as long as you bless it, we would then, as your staff, build SMART, you know, that acronym, short-term goals and objectives toward reaching each. And of course, we always have to pay attention to available resources. And I think I said to each of you in your agenda review, right now, there really aren't any available resources. And that's part of why we're having this whole, the other conversation and doing some polling and things like that, is to see what our community is comfortable with by way of, you know, bringing about more resources. So does that sound like a reasonable approach for next steps? Do I have consensus on that?
Yes.
Yeah, the only other thing that I'm going to request is if somebody could check on the timeline for, if we were to give consideration to putting a sales tax measure on the ballot, when does that need to be done?
I think Mr. Wong.
Do you know that off the top of your head, or can you let me know before the next meeting?
I know we have talked about it.
There's a, thank you, Madam Mayor and the council members. There is a difference between when the council has to act, and when the ballot measure has to be given to the Sacramento Elections Office. And the date for the ballot measure to be given to the election office is sometime in June, Krista, if I'm not mistaken. But in order to make that happen, council ideally should pass a resolution sometime in April or May.
Okay, so I would like to have another meeting, or add this to the agenda of an existing, I don't, you know, it's up to my colleagues whether or not you'd like to have another special meeting, or just get this agendized. But if we've got to do this by April or May, that's going to need to have to happen within the next 30 days.
Well.
Can I just add that if the council decides to pursue a sales tax increase, we need to have a strategic conversation about what year it is best to do it. I would argue that if we're going to go that route, a presidential election year is better. Historically, for tax increases, that is true.
No, and I'd just like to have a conversation about it, because we haven't actually had that conversation.
Okay. And also in 2022, there's supposedly a transportation measure for Sacramento County on the ballot.
There's not supposedly, there is one.
And I want to add that, you know, you did give us a direction to, you know, work with a qualified, you know.
No, I want, I want this council to have a discussion about whether or not we're even going to move forward with that.
We will.
If there's not consensus on the council, then we can take this off the table for the time being.
Right.
So I'd just like to agendize either a special meeting to have a conversation about it, or we add it to an existing agenda in the next 30 days.
Okay, understood. And what we're desiring of is that our data will help tell us if, first of all, there's any appetite for this whatsoever. And if there is, is a short runway okay, or as, you know.
No, that's why I want to have the conversation. I don't know.
Or longer runway, so 20.
She's saying, don't you want to wait for the data?
Yeah, I think.
When are you going to have the data?
Definitely, I think within, I don't want to say it for sure, but I think we can meet your timelines.
Okay.
Elaine, I have a question, too. So we have this list, and, you know, one of the things I hear is, you know, we may not have the money. Is it possible to create a line item that gives us an estimate of what it would cost to do this? So we looked at several different options. Is it possible to put a cost to it, or an estimate of what it would cost? That way, we could look and say, that one's not doable right now, because it would cost so, you know, so much money. But some of these that have, that have no cost or little cost, maybe those are things that we could potentially look at right now.
Yeah, I think that that would be the idea, or my hope, is to be able to get to that point where you have a menu of options. Like, of course, you know, these general things we're going to keep doing, you keep running the city, but we have this little extra bit, and, you know, here's some ways we could spend it, or this barely costs anything, let's move ahead. But every year, the city's financial situation would inform our progress on the agenda, you know, unless there's some unexpected windfall or opportunity that just falls in our lap, which would be magical. Yeah, so at 3:55 PM, I will, oh, don't get me in trouble with the mayor here, YK. I've got 4 o'clock. It's coming right up.
No, the mayor is good. I want to make sure. One thing I just want to, you know, I said it when we were talking about the challenge or issue in front of us is the sales tax decreasing revenue. That's what we heard loud and clear. And we put the three reasons why, but two of those reasons are not for Folsom. It's generic for everybody. There is only.
I think three of them are, they're generic across the board. Okay, good.
Yeah, I don't, I think what, I think the mayor is saying, they're not specific to Folsom, you know, that we're all dealing with these situations in different ways, but it's hitting Folsom harder in a couple of areas.
Right. So when we were talking with Mr. Tom, and he did express, you know, how other cities are doing or trying, without going through the deep discussions and analysis, I think Sarah also mentioned you are collecting some information for the existing properties and parcels and all those. It's probably too early for me on my side. Maybe I can wait for the data, if that helps. Thank you.
Can I just make one little comment? Take me a minute. Carrie, I just want to say, Elaine, I want to give you kudos for going through this exercise, because, you know, this is like, this is real leadership, that you can look at, we can look at ourselves, you know, transparently, and look at opportunities, and look at weaknesses, and not take it personal, but take it as, as an opportunity to be better tomorrow and the next year and the year after that. And so I just want to say, great job in starting this strategic plan. I think for me, as I mentioned earlier, as a council member, it gives me so much more clarity in terms of where we're going. And so, yeah, great job.
Thank you. And I give a lot of credit to the executive management team as well.
Madam Mayor, if I may clarify the deadlines, I have the document from the Sacramento County Voters' Office, Elections Office. For the 2022 election, the deadline to submit the measures to the elections office is between July 18th and August 1st. And the absolute deadline for the city council, the last possible day for the city council to adopt a revenue measure is August 9, 2022. If the council.
Okay, all right.
If the council pushes out.
That's helpful information.
Basically, when we have information, we will return back to you as soon as we can. So thank you, everyone. I look forward to returning this topic later. I appreciate you giving up your precious afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 3:58. We'll see, I'll see my colleagues back here at 5:30.